Senior, or young adults? Because with the pool from the reading, some local. The dog watching, and photographs taking of your dog.
Well, they get out of college, maybe five, nineteen brand new. College.
Oh, my God. What about interview? I think it's closing.
Yeah, my son's in DC. He's just started as a freshman at GW. So he's, uh, his, it was his dream to go out there.
The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at seven PM. Secretary, please call roll.
Chairperson Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Kendra Barberina.
Here.
Commissioner Greger here. Treasurer Dor Shavitz.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Barry.
Here.
Commissioner Itzal is excused.
Thank you. And we have the, do we have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda? I have no additions or corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Barberina and, excuse me, and supported by Commissioner Boyd to approve the agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting of August sixteenth?
Mr. Chairperson, I have one minor change. At the top of page two, it says, "All ayes except Commissioner Boyd, who abstained due to his absence at that meeting." It's actually Commissioner Barry that was gone, not me.
I thought we made that, did we make that correction? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August sixteenth?
Mr. Chairperson, I both we approve the meeting minutes of August sixteenth.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Boyd and, yeah, Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Greger to approve the August sixteen minutes, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Indemnity, because I was not present at the meeting.
Okay, so Commissioner Barberina abstains. This is the time for public comments for any non-agenda items. So is there anyone here that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? You'd be granted three minutes. Okay, then we'll move on. We have application twenty-four ninety-three, the car wash and drive-through restaurant, conditional zoning. And Ms. Wolf.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you hear me well enough?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so before you is application number two-four-nine-three, which is a conditional rezoning application for a car wash and drive-through restaurant. And I would like to preface this with our reminder, which is that a conditional rezoning differs from a regular rezoning in that the applicant is voluntarily offering restrictions on the rezoning to try to make it more compatible with the intent of the rezoning itself. So in this case, conditions may be voluntarily offered by the applicant but cannot be requested by the commission. So, dear commission members, we reviewed the conditional rezoning application to rezone the property at four-zero-seven-zero Ann Arbor Road from the Office Arc District, which is Office Services Ann Arbor Road, to the ARC, Ann Arbor Road District. Today, we will have a public hearing right after this presentation, which will allow for members of the public to speak for three minutes on this item. The subject area contains one parcel, two-point-four-five acres in size, located on the northeast corner of the Ann Arbor Road Hagerty Road intersection. Presently, it contains an unoccupied two-story office building previously known as Applied Fitness Solutions. Before you, you have our review letter, which I will say is quite lengthy, so I'm gonna try to summarize these bits as we go through. So the first one to note is that we've evaluated the existing land use, current zoning, and future land use designation of this site and the sites around it. So this site is currently zoned, as I said, Ann Arbor Road Corridor Office, and the future land use designation for this is still Ann Arbor Road Corridor Office. Although I should note that the 2015 master plan was, of course, prepared prior to the pandemic, and since then, we've seen a decline in office demand and office uses, just something to keep in mind. To the north of it is single-family residential property that is zoned, single-family residential, and planned for the future to be residential medium density, which is still single-family. Existing land use to the south is the Henry Ford complex, which is a mix of uses, you know, restaurant, hospital, car dealership, and that is currently zoned Ann Arbor Road Corridor. It is still planned to be Ann Arbor Road Corridor under the future land use map. To the east is another office building that similarly is zoned Office Services Ann Arbor Road Corridor and is planned as residential high density. To the west is the current veterinarian, which is still operating, that is also zoned Office Services Ann Arbor Road Corridor and planned as Office Road Ann Arbor Corridor in the future. All right, on to the second page. So, for every rezoning request, we evaluate the exact same six provisions that are stipulated in the local law in our zoning ordinance. The first one is whether or not the proposed rezoning will be in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. In this case, the basic intent and purpose is to provide regulations and restrictions on the use of land and structures to promote and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the Plymouth Township community. We find that this conditional rezoning from OS Arc to Arc is in accordance with the above-stated intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance. And keep in mind, this finding is based on the conditional nature of the rezoning. The second condition is whether or not the proposed amendment will further the comprehensive plan and also be consistent with the future land use map in the master plan. And if it is not consistent, does the map itself need to be updated? So as I mentioned, the future land use map continues to designate this site as Office Ann Arbor Road Corridor. However, we have seen a steep decline in demand for office space across the country since the 2020 COVID, or 2019 COVID-19 pandemic, and as such, it's worth noting that this may be more appropriate as an ARC district designation than, you know, a plain Office ARC. Office uses are still allowed in the ARC district, but it's not exclusively offices. So although this does not directly correspond with the future land use map, as most rezonings tend to do, we do believe that this would generally be appropriate with the intent and comprehensive planning goals of the 2015 master plan. The third condition is, will the amendment correct in an equitable situation created by the zoning ordinance rather than granting special privileges? In this case, the proposed rezoning will not grant special privileges as it conferred the goals and objectives of the master plan. The fourth condition is, will the amendment result in unlawful exclusionary zoning? In this case, no, we are not aware of any exclusionary zoning issues associated with this request. And for example, exclusionary zoning is when you intentionally try to zone out one land use that you don't want in your community. So in this case, you know, this is, there are plenty of other office buildings, car washes, all this stuff, it's not like you're excluding one particular thing. The fifth criteria is, is the proposed rezoning consistent with the zoning classification of surrounding land? I already covered what the zoning classifications are around the site. You know, we have a mix of single-family residential, Office Services Ann Arbor Road Corridor, and just plain Ann Arbor Road Corridor to the south. So in general, we find that this is consistent. Again, that is based on the fact that it is also offered with conditions that restrict the use of the site to only the two uses specified. Number six is, could all the requirements in the proposed zoning classification be complied with on the subject parcel? So the applicant is proposing to construct a combined automatic automotive wash and drive-in restaurant with an outdoor dining area. This means that there'd be, you know, several different use-specific conditions that would need to be met in any future site plan. One is the conditions associated with drive-throughs. Two is the conditions associated with outdoor cafes. Three is the conditions associated with automotive washes. So, you know, at this stage, the applicant is not required to submit a complete site plan, but they have submitted a concept plan that has accurate dimensions on it, and we've reviewed it to make sure that any future site plan could be configured in a way to meet these requirements. So based on our findings and evaluation of the concept plan, the parcel could be configured in a way to make sure it meets these stipulations of the zoning ordinance for any future site plan. You know, some cases, a parcel is just too small or too weirdly shaped, and that's really what we're looking for in this case is, you know, could it never be met, or could it be met in the future? All right. And all of those criteria are listed for you on pages four and five. Sorry, they're a little bit long. So if you'd like, you know, to get into questions about any of those specific criterias for their uses, just let me know. So on page six, which is our conclusion, as a conditional rezoning request from the Office Arc District to the Arc District, the Planning Commission has the following options. You can either recommend approval to the Board of Trustees or recommend denial to the Board of Trustees, and the Board will make a final decision on any rezoning. In the case of approval or denial, you must specify the findings of fact that such a decision is based upon. Our recommendation, based on the findings in this review, is that the proposed conditional rezoning to the Arc Ann Arbor Road Corridor District be recommended for approval to the Board of Trustees, including any approval of the special land uses for the drive-through restaurant with the outdoor cafe space and the auto wash facility. A finding that the request is, A, consistent with the goals of the 2015 and draft 2025 township master plans, such as redeveloping the site to reflect high-quality design standards that contribute to the positive image of the township. B, that the site will establish an appropriate use of the property, which is presently vacant and underutilized, with little or no interest from developers for office reoccupation. C, that it is an appropriate transitional use that separates the major commercial corridor of Ann Arbor Road with the existing single-family residential development to the north. And D, that it will likely encourage maintenance to the existing character of the subject sites. So beyond this letter, there's a few points of clarification that I would like to add, just so everyone is on the same page. So the main condition of this rezoning is that the use of the site would be limited. It would be limited to the uses that are permitted in the Ann Arbor Road Corridor District, and then only the two special land uses that the applicant wishes to develop. That means that other special land uses, like hotels, and more intensive ones, like automotive dealerships, would not be permitted on the site. And that's part of why our recommendation is approval, was because those more intensive or more obtrusive special land uses would be prohibited as a condition of this rezoning. Only the, you know, the drive-through and the outdoor cafe would be a part of this. Another condition is that the applicant has offered to establish a screening wall at the back of the site. So there's already a brick wall, but a screening wall of evergreen trees along the entire back of the site. And, you know, for a traditional Ann Arbor Road Corridor site, we would require a wall and then some deciduous trees, that's the basic requirement, and the applicant is offering to go above and beyond and put in, you know, a very thick evergreen screen to help protect those single-family homes from any light, noise, whatever it may be, coming from the site. So that's something else to note that is being voluntarily offered as a condition for this rezoning. So the other thing that I would like to clarify for this process is that it's a little strange because the uses the applicant wants to establish are special land uses, not outright permitted ones in the Arc District. So by, if you were to recommend approval of this application, you would thereby be recommending approval of those special land uses as well. And I know that sounds strange, but it's impossible to separate the two, because say, you approve this conditional rezoning, and then the applicant submitted for the special land use, and you denied it, it would, it just confound each other, right? So just know that that's a part of what's before you today, you know, an important consideration.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
So if we were to approve this, and it goes forward, and ultimately, let's say the development falls down, what's gonna happen to the rezoning that zones particularly for that special use?
So it could be developed for those two special land uses or a permitted use in the Arc District. So that's things like restaurants, basic retail, you know, those lighter uses that are not as intensive. So, you know, it doesn't prevent it from being redeveloped ever again, because if you zoom something for just one use, it kind of constrains it. So permitted uses would still be allowed.
Thank you.
But, um...
So if there's a, a restaurant is permitted in the, in the Arc, why would this be a special use for the restaurant? I didn't...
Because it's a drive-through.
Oh.
Yeah, so, you know, regular restaurants, you could put up right now, but it's because of the drive-through. So I know that's a lot that I just covered.
Is it typical that a single parcel will be rezoned?
Yep, that is pretty normal.
Okay, because I notice on this side, we have office on one side, on east side, right? It's still gonna be there.
Ann Arbor Road on either side of the parcel, yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So communities do rezonings, I will say, broadening in two different ways. Either the community, like the government itself, will choose to rezone all the parcels in the township to match the future land use plan, or they'll let property owners kind of opt-in one by one. There are different advantages to each. So if you do a comprehensive rezoning of all the land in the township, obviously, that means you're super aligned with your master plan. It also means that you've created tons and tons of non-conformities that can really cause people to struggle, right? Especially if their property goes vacant for a little while, and suddenly they can't reestablish it as what it once was. Whereas the opt-in tactic doesn't create non-conformities like that, but it takes a long time to, you know, see the zoning map eventually match the master plan. So Plymouth Township has opted for the latter strategy, just, you know, that's, that's their tactic.
Other questions? And is the applicant here? Right here, yes, please, thanks.
Good evening, my name is Brian Amon. Oh, here's, okay, good, I'll make sure you're hearing me appropriately. Brian Amon, attorney on behalf of All rig, the applicant, the owner of the site and this property. I have with me Samantha Bergner from All rig, as well as Michael Gold from Stonefield Engineering, and will be prepared to answer any questions. First, thank you, I want to thank the administration and Laura for the thorough review of the project. We're, instead of dragging you through every little detail of it, we want to try to focus on any particular questions or anything you may have. But prior to that, I want to just make a few comments, and particularly as to the nature of the rezoning request we have, and also along the line of the two particular uses. First, as Laura indicated, this is, we are offering this as a conditional rezoning. So as to the one question, we are particularly cognizant of the fact, as the owner of the site, if something were to happen to a particular tenant or whatever, that we are going to be restricted as it relates to the types of uses, and that's the condition of offering that we're making, as to the permitted uses or the two uses that were being permitted. We're also, we've read, we've received and reviewed some of the comments that have been received from the public about the proposal, about the concerns regarding either noise or activity or, you know, sightlines and those kinds of things. And we are also offering an additional condition that none of these operations will go past nine PM at night. That that will be the closing time of both operations. And I can divulge now that is, the car wash is known as L Car Wash, that's the user. The restaurant is a Starbucks, and, and they will not operate, they close at nine PM. And so we've heard concerns about potential late-night drive-through operations or concerns or whatever, as it relates particularly to the special use nature of this, that we can, we're prepared to not only have to have you worry about, oh, that's fine, what if someone else shows up? We're willing to add as a condition to the rezoning that there will be, that the, these operations will close at nine PM in the evening, they will not go past nine PM, as an additional condition, to help address concerns about potential noise or other elements after hours like that.
They open.
Right, we'll, we'll get to questions in a minute.
They, they will operate their typical hours, the, the car wash opens at seven AM, and then the, the Starbucks opens at six AM. So the, and I'll, I'll try not to interrupt you, if you would, please not do the same for me, so.
Excuse me, is this seven days a week?
They are seven days a week, in terms of operations, yes. Yes. And as to the users, Samantha can provide, if it's helpful to you, a little more information on the particular car wash user. It is not what you're used to as a typical car wash, it is more, it's the car wash of the future as it relates to elements of sustainability and noise and lighting, internal operation of everything that goes on, even, even the vacuums are operated out of one particular system that keeps the decibel levels down to thirty and fifty decibels, so there's, it's really something different than you've ever seen in this area. And so Samantha is certainly prepared, if you'd like to see a little more presentation and information, we can provide that to you in just one second, so she can walk you through that quickly, so you have a better understanding of that. I think most people are probably familiar enough with the standalone Starbucks operation, but the L Car Wash is something that's probably new to you. The, we've, we've seen the concerns, we've, we've seen concerns regarding the driveway coming in the, in the rear. It's our intention to not only, obviously, the site would be raised and fully improved, new landscaping, and new paving and everything like that, it's our intention to honor all the easements that are in place, not violating those. We are under the easement in place responsible for seventy-two percent of all the things that costs involvement of that driveway, so we, we get that. We are also, we've heard concerns about the number of car washes in town, and I'll tell you, I certainly understand that, to the extent that somebody could have a concern that, you know, do we really need another car wash? And as I said, as you'll see from Samantha in a second, this is the car wash of the future, it's, there is actually, they have a membership basis they actually work on, that people join and kind of, you know, operate that way, as well as public there, and, but more importantly, the way they, they run their system in terms of the staff on-site, they have effectively between five and seven staff members on-site, and it's all about customer service in terms of how they operate that, so she'll explain that shortly. But, but I'm, I, I want to reference that, although I understand concerns about, maybe we have too many car washes already, when you start to look around, I would submit to you that that's really, first off, not true. Secondly, when you talk about, when I stood before this planning commission years ago to work on the Henry Ford project, so that we could do the appropriate things in place to have the Henry Ford building come in place, we knew that that project would start to cause a transformation of the area and of the block along there. So the fact that we're starting to see something on the north side is important, because quite frankly, everybody, I think no one would disagree, the building that's there now is an eyesore, and it's time, its time has come, and it's time to be replaced with something new and that will sustain the site for many years to come. And so while there are some concerned about maybe, this is one too many car wash, my guess is Janat Poniek, Janat felt the same way about Dick Scott, Dick Scott felt the same way about Victory Honda, Victory probably felt the same way, you know, about Fox Hills and Heinz Park and suburban. So we understand that there are people concerned about competition, but I'll suggest to you that, first off, this is important for the transformation of this corridor, to start to see new development on the north side, number one. Number two, that we believe this is gonna be a car wash, that it's gonna be very different than what you've seen in other places, not only on how it treats its customers, how it operates, based on its experience in some of the higher-end communities throughout Florida and other places, but also how it essentially is the car wash of the future in terms of sustainability and all those elements. So I think you'll find that it will be a tremendous asset to the community. So, and Laura referenced that, although we are currently sitting with an office zoning site, I'm involved with other projects, and I'll tell you, I, I don't know that I'll see another office project in my lifetime at this point, based on what we're experiencing in the office market. So the ability to rezone this property away from an office use is gonna be the only way it actually moves forward for some future use, and we think it'll be done in a way that is an enhancement to the community and an asset to the community. So with that, I would like to bring up Samantha to kind of give you a quick intro to L Car And then we'll, certainly when Samantha's done, if you have any questions about the site, between Michael Gold, myself, or Samantha, or anything else, we're prepared to answer any questions. We have all that come up in the public here.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you all for your time tonight. My name is Samantha Bergner, I am with All rig Development, but work exclusively with L Car Wash in both their Michigan and Florida markets. I have gotten to know L Car Wash quite significantly through working with them in both operating markets and the prospective Michigan markets, and wanted to just give you guys some additional information about their operations. So L Car Wash was acquired in 2019 by the two owners that hold it today. They have partnered with a car wash operator that has been operating over ten years in the market to help hone in and really focus on customer experience and operations throughout the site. They take those principles that they've learned and fold them into all of the sites that they're planning for development opening today. So a few key operation facts to keep in mind when looking at this site is that the customers stay in their cars the entire time as going through the wash. They do utilize the vacuums mostly after the wash or before, but mostly stay in their cars. So our employees on-site, there's usually about five employees on-site, around twenty to twenty-five employees that are hired per site, are there solely for customer assistance and control of the site itself. So there's no loud music allowed on-site, so when people are vacuuming their cars, there's no speakers or anything being played, there's no automatic messages being played at the pay stations when checking out as well, and the employees are there to help control the site and make sure it's run in orderly fashion, both from its operations and its visual standpoint. A piece to note on the noise level of the site, L creates different investment, investment into the site, including both noise and equipment. So from the noise aspect, instead of having individual motors at each vacu, which you'll see on the current car washes that are there in many scenarios, they have one motor that is powering a line of vacuums. That motor itself is encased in a concrete enclosure that is about eight feet high and muffles the sound to about thirty, forty-four decibels, which is between a whisper and rainfall. So they invest in those measures to help muffle those noises on the vacuums themselves. In the tunnel, they silence all of their blowers with silencers to make sure that the noises at the end of the tunnel are not impactful outside of the tunnel itself, so they really try to enclose that noise, both within the closures and the tunnel. As it relates to sustainability, they also provide an equipment package with reverse osmosis, which allows reuse of the water that's going through the wash. So typical car washes that you see people washing in their driveways range about hundred-and-forty gallons per wash, L is able to get those down between twenty and thirty gallons per car. So we're able to take that, that water that is recycled, put it through the system, and then put it back into the wash to help limit the strain on the environment. Another large element that I personally really like about what L brings to the community is the different benefits they provide. So we met with Tom Young on the Chamber of Commerce to help understand different partnerships with the businesses in the local areas, as well as schools and fundraisers. One element that they bring into their site is called a takeover day, which I personally have a fond connection to, growing up playing sports, is they allow different organizations to come in and utilize the facility as the car wash concept, where you see a lot of different fundraising organizations having car washes to raise money. They're actually allowed to use the facility, and fifty percent of the profits from that day are given back to the organization. So along with that element, they also look at partnering with local charities. An example in Florida is they partnered with Baptist Health to help provide donations to help the hospital system out there. So, you know, they're not, they're based in Florida, but they're coming into Michigan, they're really looking at ways to get integrated into the community itself and committed to that, along with providing top-notch quality service in the car wash industry. So happy to answer any questions or provide any additional...
Can you comment at all on, on lighting? What kind of lighting would be around the facility? Is it bright lights or...?
Yep, so all the lighting from the car wash service itself is within the tunnel. All the other site standard lighting, which we have Mike Gold here with our Stonefield Engineering that can go into the specifics of it, are just standard lighting to the ordinance. There's no specialty lighting outside, there's no specialty lighting on the vacs themselves, just sight lighting to allow people to be able to utilize the site in darker hours.
And we'll be in compliance with all photometric requirements, and then in, in addition to that, we've also, on a day, had the ever, more evergreen trees along the back. And also, we, we put in the letter on the application, one of the other elements, and Laura kind of referenced it, but I want to be more specific. If our neighbors to the west of us, which is the veterinary clinic and the Burger King are willing, we are willing to essentially make sure that when we plant the evergreens, we make it a continuous line for the entirety of the development, so that it looks like more unified in appearance, but also provides a greater, a greater buffering, because right now, when you get there, there are some deciduous trees, but they don't do anything in the dead of winter, and they also may not do anything from twelve feet on down or whatever. We want to try to help buffer the noise that hits the wall, because that wall acts as a reverberator, so we want to knock the noise down before it hits the wall, but also knock noise and lighting down for the entirety of the site if possible. If our neighbors are willing to let us do that, we're certainly, we're making it offering as a condition as well to plant trees along the rears of their site as well, that would be consistent with the planting pattern and materials that we're doing on our site as well.
Do you have any facilities close by that, any...
What's the closest?
So we do not have any operating facilities close by in Michigan just yet. We do have two sites under construction, one in Brighton, Michigan, and one in Madison Heights.
How many states are you in?
Just Florida, and then Michigan is the next target.
We are, it's important to note that under the current zoning, you know, the required setback of, of any building on the site would be twenty feet. Obviously, because of the nature of our uses, but also because of the desire to, you know, mitigate impacts, we've pulled the buildings a hundred-and-twenty feet away from the site. So we're, as, as, and we've effectively offered the plan that you've seen as a condition to say that we're... the plan that you've seen as a condition to say that we're going to design it and build it in this way to make sure that you don't have buildings or facilities closer than what were depicted there, because we want you to be able to trust in what you've seen as the picture of what you would get as a condition of that as well.
Other questions from the commission before I open up public hearing?
May I make one other comment?
Sure.
So before you, I just want to mention for the public record, we do have a summary of written comments that we've received. We have received six written comments in opposition and one written comment in favor. That written comment in favor was sent this morning, so we didn't print it out in time to put it in your packet, but it will be included in the official record.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask our secretary to summarize those comments.
I don't have the copy of the-
No, not the latest one.
Not the latest one, though.
I can summarize them.
You want to summarize them?
Yeah, no worries.
Okay.
So the first comment is about the number of car washes in Plymouth Township, in that there are currently too many. The second comment is about the easement at the rear of the site. So there is a private easement at the rear of the site, which you may have seen in your packet, and, you know, in, in opposition for that because of the private agreement. So if you would like to get into the private easement, we can talk about it a little bit more. But, you know, just always note that the, unless a township is a party to an easement, we, we don't consider them when evaluating requests. So similarly, when I evaluate residential lot splits, I always tell every property owner, you know, it's your responsibility to make sure that if you have any easements with your neighbors, to make sure that those are identified and figured out. So we can get into easement in a little bit, but I'm going to keep going through the comments. The next comment is again in opposition. This one is due to the number of car washes and also just the general amount of traffic and cars moving down the corridor. The, what is this one? The next comment is again in opposition. This one is about the number of car washes along the corridor, as well as the noise and smells that come from the businesses that are directly adjacent. Next one again is in opposition. This one would be, this one is again mostly about noise, especially noise in the evening time. And there's also a note about that there's another car wash very nearby. And then the last comment in opposition is, this is a comment from when this was first submitted as a PUD. As you know, it was submitted as a PUD, then withdrawn, and then resubmitted as a conditional rezoning. So this one is it, you know, because of the attractiveness of the proposed items before you, the environmentalism of the items before you, and the demand for office use. So. And then the comment in favor was, let me just pull it up really quick, that was received today at 5:00 PM, and it was in favor because they would like to see the office uses redeveloped as they've currently, you know, in their opinion of the comment, or they're underused. So, and they also note that they're in favor, given that the traffic signal has been improved, as associated with Henry Ford. So those are the written comments we received, and then I'm sure you'll have more comments from the public.
A question.
Yes.
Nanny, I have a couple of questions. So just to make sure I understand, if this is approved tonight, and the car wash and, and cafe drive-through do not go through, then would all of the ARC uses be admissible on that property?
No. So the condition is that the developer develop it for these two uses first. If down the line, the car wash and the drive-through close, because there's not enough demand for those uses, then it could be redeveloped for a permitted use in the ARC district. But it, you know, it wouldn't be allowed to be the whole suite of other special land uses in the ARC district.
But the other uses in the ARC district?
The other uses in the ARC district that are permitted, here, I'm happy to read them off. I have it up right here. So.
So if this isn't developed for some reason, downturn in the economy, it's not?
I mean, if this site plan never materializes.
Right.
Then it would revert back to OS ARC.
It would?
Yeah.
Okay.
If no action is taken after border, if say the board of trustees approves this, the conditional rezoning, if no action is taken, it would just revert back.
Revert back to the OS ARC?
Yep.
If Starbucks pulls out, could a Chick-fil-A go in there?
Yes. So we don't dictate as, you know, the planning commission and the township, we can't dictate what exact tenant goes into any space. You know, we can't prohibit certain retailers or commercial businesses from coming in. So if a Starbucks left and a different drive-through restaurant wanted to establish there, that would be allowed.
If there, they decided not to do the car wash and only have Starbucks or something like that, could that take up the entire site?
We would consider that something that would warrant an adjustment to the rezoning, because you're changing the proportions of the site that are dedicated to each thing. So similar to how if someone expanded a special land use at some point, they would need to come back before you to get that expansion.
So basically, they would have to do these two exact uses?
Mm-hmm.
In these same proportions that they're, they're proposing?
In line with this general concept plan, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to play off of a question that Ms. Rivera raised. So if there was another use, if this proposal did not work out for them, and let's say a Chick-fil-A would go in, or it could be any other business that requires quite a bit of stacking spaces for cars for drive-through, and they just repurpose the buildings in some way, would that ever come back to the commission or an administrative review?
So if they were just changing the user of the building, just the tenant, right? That does not have to appear before the planning commission. That's something that can be administratively approved by the building department. Just how if you have a law office and they want to occupy it for a real estate office, if they're not changing the envelope at all, they're not changing the layout of the site, that can be administrative.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I recognize that. But that means if they did open up a business that required a lot of stacking spaces, because it's a drive-through of some type, they could just do that and it would never be reviewed, except by the building department.
I think, so you mean if they had to change the configuration of the site to accommodate more stacking?
No, no, let's say they just, so they, they operated this, you know, as it is, and it doesn't work out. I'm not, I'm not sure what they would do with the, with the car wash portion of the building. But let's say if it didn't work out and they tore down the car wash, and then they wanted to develop stacking spaces or something that's needed for a unique purpose for that new tenant, that would still come before us?
Yes.
Because it's, isn't it 10% if you change 10% of the footprint?
Yeah, basically, anything bigger than a dumpster and a facade refresh comes back to the commission.
I'm just concerned about, now that, you know, you raised it, is if there's some unique site issues that might develop from the old operation to a new operation, how would, how would it be reviewed?
So if they were changing the site in any way to accommodate a new drive-through operation that has a higher number of users, they would have to come back before the commission for a site plan amendment.
If I may, just to also, from the developer's perspective, to add a little more clarity on that, the number of stacking spaces is that, is an element of the site plan approval. Anything that we were to do of any user that would require increase in stacking would require us to, it would essentially, the rezoning would either go away unless come back to here and reaproved. I'm also willing to indicate too, and your attorney reminded me, and we will certainly put these in writing, what I put, what I said on the record today, you'll have them in writing when, when we're completed. We're also willing to not only, although it's been explained that we would, we are, the condition are these users, we're also prepared to make a condition of this rezoning as to these users, so that it would be to L Car Wash and to Starbucks, because we want there to be absolute comfort that there is no attempt or desire to try to sneak in some other tenant that changed it out without having to come back to the planning commission to say, is this appropriate? Does this meet the zoning that you meet? So we would add as a condition being offered, not only as to the things I've already mentioned, but to that these are the users that we are seeking these, this rezoning for, and that these, and we recognize the risk in that as the owner of the site. But if the user were to change, we would have to come back that, you know, and see the planning commission on the rezoning of that to see whether it's consistent with that or have that conversation. Is it fun to do that? No, but we want there to be an absolute comfort and some trust that is to relate what will actually be there. And so we've offered to say, here's the plan that would be there. We're now saying, here's the plan, and here are the users that would be there. So.
So to get into the, to the Starbucks, if you're driving eastbound, you would go through the light and then take a left turn before the next light?
At, at the traffic, there is a traffic light at the entrance to this site now.
There's a traffic light right there.
It's, it's traffic controlled by the new light that went in there. It's, and it was designed, you know, for two, two lanes out, one lane in, so fully functional, yes. And we have a traffic study that's obviously been done, working, you have to, because of the proximity of this, as you're aware, with the freeway, it involves M.D. involvement as well, the township reviewing the counties.
So will your driveway, your driveway then will line up with the driveway that goes into Henry Ford and the?
It would use the existing driveway. The township was involved with the new driveway. We would use that existing driveway right there with that light. That would, there would be no new driveways into the site than what's, other than what's there now. And that's what's, that's what's reflected in the plan.
Yeah, it's hard to tell for me. Any other questions or concerns at this point before we open up? Okay. And I will open up the public hearing at 7:39. So anyone that wishes to speak or have questions on this, we'll, we'll answer the questions after everyone has had a chance to speak. We have, you have a three-minute time limit. We ask you to be clear, concise, cogent, and civil. Civil is a key word right now, because some of these meetings have not been very civil, and nothing gets accomplished that way. And I will ask the secretary to, the summarization that was given by the planner, just include that once we start the public hearing, because those were really public comments. So who here would like to speak first? Just come on up and give us your name if you so desire. Just come on up. You don't have to be recognized. Yeah, please.
Hello, my name is Bruce Harla. I live at 40729 Pine Tree Drive, ground zero, directly behind this plan. And as I'm speaking, I might end up sounding like I have questions, but I think I know the answers. Now, this isn't zoned for a car wash, right?
It's a conditional.
Okay. So, and there's a reason for that, and it's probably because it's residential behind it, right?
Well, it's not a permitted use in that particular district.
Because there's residents all along Pine Tree Drive.
Well, the interaction, or the interplay between residents and what happens on Ann Arbor is an important issue.
All right. So, well, I would just hope that the board would take into consideration the good people of Pine Tree Drive and their, the values of their home. And of course, I'll get into the noise here in a minute. My family has lived there since 2010, and we plan on staying there once this is turned down. But I am right behind that. I have a handicapped child, and I know that probably doesn't matter, but it does. He's, he sleeps throughout the day at times, and he has seizure disorders, and medicine creates times where he needs to sleep during the day. And I know that the gentleman said it's between 30 and 50 decibels, but hearing that, let's say 14 hours a day, let's just average it 20 washes an hour, what's that, 280 car washes a day, at 50 decibels in your backyard, it doesn't matter if it's faint or if it's mildly loud, that the O'Hairs who are here and myself, and that would just be absolutely aposturous that you guys would consider doing that to the good people of Pine Tree. And I am getting a little anxious, because I can't believe we're here. In the hours of seven in the morning to have car washes going on, until 9:00 PM at night, the school kids that live next door, it's just other things that are coming to mind. And in this car wash, would there be vacuums for the, the people to come up and use through 7:00 AM till 9:00, you know, to vacuum out their car? And how many? And how loud are those are questions that I have to, we would, along with the car wash, the blower blowing, you know, making that, that noise that every one of them does, along with, you know, 10, 12 vacuums going on, is that part of the car wash's plan? And has anyone come to the township and asked that we have another car wash, seeing how we have, from that site, two within a mile, and then another two within two miles, two hand washes, two hand spray washes within a mile and a half, and then another one around on?
You'll have to wrap it up, because I'm giving you a few more seconds, so if there's anything else.
Do you want me to wrap it up? Is that what you're saying?
Well.
I might be ranting, I apologize.
Well, you can always come back with an additional comments. Once everyone has had a chance to speak, you're welcome to come back a second time.
Okay. I just wish that the board, I'm a lifelong Plymouth Township resident, would consider our, as if this was in your backyard. That's all I got to say. If this was in your backyard, would you please take that when you vote?
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none?
You have one more.
Oh, one more? Okay.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
Good evening. My name's Jack Knowles. I was at the township office today looking at the application, and it, it struck me as a bit unusual in that there was no narrative or justification submitted by the applicant supporting or justifying the rezoning application. I just found that unusual. Usually, my experience has been that there's generally fairly complex or detailed information submitted, so that the planner then has something to work in her report, to refer to, and to either counteract or, or, or agree with. And I didn't see any of that in the official file, including nowhere other than on the second page of the plan set, which technically really isn't part of the application in a sense, because it's, it's a preliminary site plan submitted for informational purposes only. The only place they refer to the conditions are in a table on the second page of that, of that plan set. And I had to chuckle, with all due respect to Mr. Amen, at his, at the letter that he sent, that it was in, it was in, submitted in addition to other supporting documents for the application, which there were no other documents. And I find it also interesting that as the conversation has developed this evening, additional conditions keep getting suggested that they'll, that they'll do this or they'll do that. Again, there's nothing has been submitted in writing to this body, which I believe is required by statute, saying what those conditions are for the conditional rezoning. Also, the plans note this is a consent judgment site. So on the cover, the, on the cover sheet of the plan set, what is that all about? It's not noted anywhere in the planner's report. There's no documentation in the file. Nothing has been said, other than on the plans, that this is a consent judgment site. And how does that affect the property? How does that affect any potential uses? How does that affect this application, if at all? We don't know, because we don't have the information to know that. Also, why a conditional rezoning? Why a conditional rezoning that specifically limits the uses of this property to two of the most intense uses permitted under your special land use conditions? Why not a more conventional? Because that, once it's, if you rezonate to those two uses, that's all, that's all that can go there. A medical office, which, by the way, you have a new medical center across the street, those generate other offices, needs for other doctors' offices, not car washes and Starbucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Something like, what are they writing?
Hi, we're the O'Hairs. We live next, right, right behind the site. A couple of questions. You had mentioned if Starbucks doesn't go in there and another restaurant goes in there, what are, what are their hours going to be? Are they going to go past the nine o'clock at night?
The 7:00 AM.
If another- If another restaurant decides to go in there, are those hours locked in whoever moves into this, into the site?
They'll ask the question.
Okay. Another thing I noticed is they actually came onto our property and staked out our gas line and our water line. Are they planning on feeding this site with the utilities from the subdivision into this site? Which would affect our fire hydrants in the neighborhood? Is that all?
Well, we'll ask the question, I'm sure, just from my own perspective only because I'm not the engineer, I haven't reviewed anything. But that site has been used and I'm sure there's water service, gas service to it, but we'll ask the question.
Yeah, a car wash would probably take a lot more water than an office building, but that would affect the flow to all our fire hydrants in our neighborhood.
We'll ask the question.
And when we called to ask what the staking was, we were misled on what that was.
Yeah, can you just talk more into the mic?
So when we called and asked what the staking was in our yard, we were misled on what that was for.
What were you told?
We were told it was for our residents. You know, we had a, we needed a new gas line or new something. So that was a little mischievous, mischievous.
Told by the utility.
Yeah, who told you that?
Um, who did I call?
Miss Dig, we called Miss Dig.
Miss Dig. So that's a little, kind of like the 7:00 AM, but we'll be close by nine, right? We've all heard the, the noise from Starbucks when you go and order a coffee or a tea or whatever. It's obnoxious. Do you want that at 7:00 AM? You know, we can hear through the, through the pine trees. So please consider the people that live there.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name's Matt Pierce. I live off of Heather Hills, off of back there on the other side of town. But I grew up a car guy. You know, I, I grew up a car guy. I grew up in Dearborn, Ford and lots of cars. As I got older, I started driving. I went to the quarter car wash, self-serve. Got a little older, got some nice cars. Then these tunnel, these express tunnel washes came in. And wow, this is great. You know how many hours that saved me on a, on a weekend washing cars? Now with that said, you know, and I have no doubt this car wash that they want to bring in here is going to be run great. Great technology, good-looking building, maybe bring some jobs to the community, even though both other car washes are currently hiring. But with that said, my neighbors and myself, we're very, very fearful of Ann Arbor Road becoming Ford Road. We don't go to Ford Road. We stay out of Canton. Why? Because Ford Road is terrible. I come down early in the morning, 3:30 in the morning, I come down Ann Arbor Road. And that new light, Hagerty Road, Amazon, the traffic is bad at 3:30 in the morning. I don't go there on the weekends anymore. I don't go on the weekends because I know that traffic and maybe 275 will get done one day. Maybe. But that's going to be that many more cars coming in. And on Saturday and Sunday, when they, they're not going to do 280 cars on Saturday and Sunday. They're going to be pushing 1,000 because that's how busy these places are. But does Plymouth Township need a third wash within one mile? I, I can't, I, I, that's absurd. And I'm sure that company's going to be good. I have no doubt. But three tunnel washes in one mile? Maybe I'm missing something. Maybe I am, but I just don't see it. So that's all in, you know, it's, it's the quality of life here in Plymouth. It's changing. Five mile in back, that's another story. But Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty, Ann Arbor Road and 275? We don't, we don't go to Ford Road in Canton, I can tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Jamie Burke with Quick Pass Car Wash, 39550 Ann Arbor Road. We just got information that another car wash is looking to build. We're about a half mile down the road, right on the other side of the highway. To the last gentleman's point, I guess I'll back it up. So what I've been hearing, kind of sounds like what I say when I want to get a car wash approved, right? Except I know my competition and I know the community and I know what I'm talking about. And what I heard was zero car wash experience. We have a brand-new car wash with 20 free vacuums, three lanes, pay stations, sales staff, towels, free vacuums, memberships. We have four locations like that brand-new. I'll open another one in Canton. USA2Go offers memberships, pay lanes, same deal. Pure Car Wash and Five Sheldon, the exact same thing. So when he comes in here from a private equity group that could care less about a small community when they drop one on your head and one of us go out of business, they don't care about the leftover building that's going to be sitting. Everybody's worried about an applied fitness building that can be reaped a purpose for like medical or something because, or all kinds of stuff. You're going to sit on a car wash building forever because there is zero use when that thing is toast. Okay? And I have data, which is another thing we do when we go to banks and we go to cities. We have real data on radius pulls, vehicles, how many times they wash a year. You divide it by the amount of car washes that are like ours and we say, we're passing on that city, we're going to try for this city. Okay? And where we're at right now, after a year being open and we're professional, we have thousands of members. Okay? And by the time they even open the car wash, I have four locations around here that your passwords have. By the time they even open, I'll have another 2,000 members. They're not going to another car wash. This isn't a restaurant. They're $5 to $7 million to build. You need a million dollars in revenue a year to pay your bills. Okay? And I will guarantee you, they might not go out of business because there's private equity backing them. One of these other guys will. It won't be me. I can tell you that. But somebody will. And you guys are going to have a car wash building now instead of an applied fitness on your hands. And it amazes me that no one's asking about the financials. It's not a restaurant, we spent 300 grand and it doesn't work out. Somebody rents you a space to another restaurant, it's 2,000 a month, right? These are five, $7 million buildings. You're toast when, they don't work. They don't work. There's not enough cars in the radius. There's 26,000 registered vehicles in a three-mile radius from here. Plymouth is a slow community. This isn't Ford Road. This isn't these bigger cities like Canton I'm on. I got a Kroger, Walmart, Panera Bread, Home Depot, Dick's, 7-Eleven gas station, Comerica Bank. We're loaded up. Like this isn't that. This is a small community. People come here for restaurants and that's about it. And there's not enough local people to support this type of business. All I'm asking is that you guys reconsider this because it's not, no one's asking the right questions here. You're just talking about it.
Have to wrap it up because I've given you.
Okay, so what I'm saying to you guys is, if you guys don't reconsider, at least table it. Get my numbers, USA2Go, Pure Car Wash, and Main Street. We'll give you our data and we'll show you that I can use 150% increase and still cover the amount of cars.
Come back a second time if you want, completely.
All right, that's fine.
Hello, guys. My name's Joe. I own Main Street Auto Wash in Plymouth. We're across from the Dairy Round. It's been there 56 years. I've owned it for seven myself. And to piggyback off of what Jamie is saying, look, there's a lot of car washes in the area. Everybody is not going to be excited about another car wash. It's just, it's just out in the cars. I'm sorry. If you pull a bunch of people, you say, hey, guys, we're going to build this whole new car wash here. It's state-of-the-art. We already have state-of-the-art. We already have car washes. These people aren't going to come out of the woodwork just to support this. It's not how it works. And if you say, oh, the other car wash, they're so busy, they can't handle that. It's not the case. How many times in a year do you see our car washes that max capacity? It's not the case. We have our loyal customers, we're doing our business, giving back to the communities, and we're also locals here, grew up here. We're not from out of state. You know, we live here, our kids go to school here. So it's just, I hope you consider that these people who are looking to build this new facility, they're not from here. They, they didn't pick this special because, oh, we really want to be a part of the Plymouth community. No, they want to build 50 car washes in Michigan, Florida to Michigan. It doesn't seem all that special. It just seems like they want to move some money around and it might be just an empty lot at the end of the day. And as Jamie said, once it's a car wash, what else is it going to be unless you tear the whole thing down? There's that car wash that's over at Joy Road that hasn't been in business for a few years. It's just sitting there. It's going to be the next something sitting there. Where are they going to pull these numbers from? So I urge you to really consider that with this whole, with this whole process here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jerry Cosby at 51066 Plymouth Lake Court. I'm also Jamie's partner in Quick Pass Car Wash. Just a couple of points, listen to everybody. I understand where the L. Car Wash and the developer are coming from because we were just here two short years ago. We had to jump through a lot of hoops to prove to you guys why it'll support the business, give you the car counts, give you the financials behind that. And I'm just asking that you consider tabling it or break off the special land permit or use until you're able to get real data to make a real decision. Because I keep hearing a similar thing that Mr. Noel brought up that, you know, they're going to do this, going to do that. We have this information, we'll get you, we'll get you, we'll get you. Well, you don't give other businesses and residents that luxury to get rezoned and get a special land permit without that data. So that's all I do is ask you to consider it or table it to get that data to make a real good decision. That's all I have to say.
What car, what car wash were you?
I'm sorry, Quick Pass Car Wash.
Oh, Quick Pass?
And I do want to, they pointed out our exact business model in the opening statement. So that was kind of nice. I appreciate that, so. Yes, I'm the smart, smart bud.
Anyone else? Okay. Did you have your hand up? Okay, all right. We'll close the public hearing at 8:07.
Anyone want to come a second time?
Pardon? Yeah, anyone else wants to talk a second time? Okay.
Hi, once again, I'm Jack Knowles. Thank you for the second opportunity. Just a couple additional things. I think if you, if you look, if you go to your planning documents and it would, if you look at the, you look at the existing land use plan and you look at that part of, of Ann Arbor Road and you, you'll, you'll note that the, the uses in there are, are, are not intense uses other than right on the corner with Hagerty. Everything over there is office, all the way to the, I can't remember the name of that street there, just before 275. If you look at your future land use map, it's the same thing. It's, it's, it's intended to be office-type of development, not intense, noisy, gas fumes, vacuum noises, car wash noise, idling cars type of, of use. The, the amount of, the increase in traffic on that site would be dramatic. Starbucks has a great business. Probably create the longest drive-through queuing problems around. I've rarely seen a, a, a drive-through Starbucks that isn't queuing out into a street or into a parking lot or beyond, beyond the queuing space. Maybe they can accommodate that here in a, in a, in a better fashion. I don't have any problem with the rezoning to Arc. I think it makes perfect sense. It's in line with your master plan. That's, that's what your master plan says, that's what it should be. My issue is with the, is with the uses that are being proposed. They're too intense, they're, they're, they're not in line with your master plan. If you look at the master plan, throughout the master plan, "Goals and strategies continue to use the multi-family and office land uses as a transition between existing or proposed single-family residential. Ensure that non-residential buildings and infill development located near single-family residential developments are designed to have a residential character. New commercial developments should not be located in an area which could negatively impact residential developments and in particular should not alter the residential character." When you go through this document, I just respectfully disagree with the report that your planners put together, which really seems to be taking the position of the applicant and writing a very favorable report in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Okay.
One more.
One more, okay.
I just want to make sure.
Uh, wait, wait, start talking when you're by the mic because we got to pick it up.
I just wanted to make sure you guys, that Laura Hall sent you the email with Car Wash Competition and, and the demographic. Okay, and that's, that's real data. And again, I'd do the same thing they do. I, I want car washes too, so, but I do have data when I do it, right? And I'm, it's, it's just not some, hey, we're going to put one here. And being private equity, it's, we try to get, but they try to buy us out all the time. Well, I sell one day, maybe. But if they open 100 locations and five of them fail, it doesn't matter. It's the bottom line. You get a few duds, right? Except they're doing that in the middle of a community that's actually going to hurt the business. It's not a restaurant. Again, it's not a multi-use facility. They're extremely hard to turn these type of numbers. And Plymouth just does not bear it. It's just, there's not enough residents. And if there's any, like I said, there's any information, our car wash can wash 150 cars an hour, that's what we can process. USA can, Pure Wash can, Main Street, I'm thinking he's about 60, 80 cars an hour, right? I can do that 10 hours a day, seven days a week. All of us can. We will never come close to all doing 1,000 cars a day. Okay, I have four locate, I have bangers that do 250,000 cars a year. This isn't the city. This isn't it. There's, none of us are seeing, I, I'll do respect to the guy that said he'll do 1,000 cars in a week. They'll never see 1,000 cars here. This is not how this city works. We, we know, right? And we're lucky, we put enough money down that we can pay our bills, you know, while we grow the business. But we'll show you real data. We can up our output by 100%, all of us can, and still not even come close to our output, our top output. So why would you need another car wash? There's no lines, there's, it's just not a necessary need. We would provide you with all our data if you guys tabled it and you can make an educated decision on, okay, I don't need another empty building. Or why would I put, let them come in here and just destroy everybody else's business? Because again, they're not going to be here. They're operating from out of state, so. I mean, go off of real data, that's all I'm saying. Because what I heard today was my car wash, USA2Go's car wash and Pure's, that's all they're going to do is try to read people over the on them. It's just name it again, but that's all I got. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. We'll close the public hearing at 8:07. And Ms. Wolf, is this under a consent judgment?
Yes, I was just about to bring that up. So I'm happy to talk about the consent judgment. The consent judgment was passed by the Wayne County Circuit Court in 1980. So it was under our previous zoning ordinance and it's tied to the use of the site as a fitness center. So the consent judgment was when the site was still what we call Victanees, before it was Applied Fitness Solutions. And essentially, it restricted what the site could be used for and some of the operations of it as well. So they had submitted a site plan that had some, you know, didn't really consider buffering. It kind of just had a bunch of bright lights and, you know, not too much thought into it. The township said, no, you can't go forward with that. They sued the township, went to Circuit Court, and the court judged that the township was granted, you know, several restrictions on the site. That included that the Victanees could only operate from 10 to 6 each day. So, you know, I'm sorry, 6 to 10. So it was closed from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, they had to extinguish all the lights on the site so they wouldn't shine into the neighboring residential uses. And another one is that they had to angle their lights, which we now have in our zoning ordinance, but they had to angle their lights down so that it wasn't projecting horizontally onto the neighboring properties. You know, under our horizontally onto the neighboring properties. You know, under our previous zoning ordinance, the pre-1988 one, we didn't have all the protections we do today for lighting. So some additional restrictions were added. It also prohibited them from selling retail goods at the site. You know, a lot of fitness centers like to sell clothing, activewear, water bottles, whatever else comes along with fitness. And they were specifically prohibited from acting as a de facto retail space under that consent judgment. And similarly, you know, Applied Fitness Solutions is also a fitness center, so they're subject to it. But this new use, which is not fitness-related, would not be a part of that consent judgment. So that's why it was not included in your packet. But we do have the entire consent judgment upstairs. So if you would be more comfortable having time to read through that consent judgment, we can absolutely provide it to you.
How does it apply?
It, it doesn't apply because it was tied directly to the use of the site.
Okay.
As a gym.
Now, that would have been useful information even when Applied Fitness came before us.
Yeah.
So if a site is under a consent judgment, I think the commission should know about it, even though it may not be germane to, to the decision-making, it's good to know that history.
Yeah. And we can absolutely start providing, or I can even bring down the physical consent judgment book that we have, you know, if you guys want to.
Oh, we usually can tell when you look at the zoning map. There's a shaded, you worked on that, I know, trying to get the right colors, so.
Yeah. And so we also, so we don't lose track, right? Because eventually you start getting more sites that have special conditions like consent judgments or PUDs or rezonings. And we use that zoning map to keep track of those items so that we, you know, don't, don't lose them over time.
Bob, you had a comment. I may have interrupted you.
I, I just had a couple of comments I wanted to make, but I can hold them.
Okay. Well, first, I want people to realize that, you know, whatever we do tonight is a recommendation. It's not the final decision. It will go to the Board of Trustees. They ultimately will have the deciding vote on what happens. So you should know about that. And whenever they're going to be on the agenda, they'll be there whether or not it's approved or denied. You can look on the township website. You can sign up for alerts. You'll be getting that information that way. While I certainly support and prefer small local businesses, that the Planning Commission is not in the business of deciding who wins and who loses. We can't say, well, we're not going to have any more car washes. We are guided by the ordinance. We're guided by the, the master plan. And Ms. Howe went through her planning report that specified all of the requirements that would need to be met. And so that's really where some of our decision-making is made. I wanted to have the applicant come up, but Bob, if you want to.
Yeah, I actually, you stole the, stole my thunder.
Took the thunder? Okay.
So I just want to make a couple of comments. Somebody made a comment about why do we even bring, you know, hearing this application? And we don't pick and choose. Every applicant has their day in court. And we don't, we don't say, well, we're going to listen, we're going to hear this one and not this one. They go through a process and then we decide from there. So, and they, and they're following the process. But I just wanted to add to what Dennis said. This board doesn't, this commission doesn't have the authority, nor does the Board of Trustees, nor should they, to choose between winners and losers, right? There may be plenty of car washes, but it's not our job, we're not the bank. We're not, it's not our job to evaluate, you know, which businesses, what types of businesses we go there. We just do not have the authority to do that because that would be unconstitutional. That would be, that would be violating somebody's rights to, to say that we don't want another one, a business like this because we've already got one like this. You just can't do that in America. So just to clarify that.
What about between your citizens and the businesses?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What about choosing between your citizens?
Well, that's a different, that's a different question.
Is that your job?
Yeah, that's a different question altogether.
Okay, we're not going to have, we are not going, we're not going to have this bantering. You know, everyone had a chance to speak. Now, we need time to evaluate. Yes, well, if the applicant will come forward, I have some questions for you based on the public comments here, the citizens' comments. Do you know the hours of, of the cafe that would be opening there? And how does that coordinate with your hours?
Yeah, we, we've indicated that, that the Starbucks would operate from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The car wash would be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Do you know anything about the utilities?
Yes, I'm glad you asked that. I can, I'll try to hit some of those. All the utilities are, the engineer, Michael can, you can actually hear from an engineer, but he told me they're all coming out of the Ann Arbor Road corridor, all from there. And obviously, all the appropriate proofs have to be in place as to the water pressures and those kinds of things. There's, we have no idea why people were staked in their backyards. That doesn't, we've owned this site, so I'm not sure why that would have occurred. So if there were staking in people's rear yards, still try to find out what that was from because that wasn't from us. So, yeah.
So, and maybe the engineer, is this going to affect the water pressure for hot fire hydrants or?
He'll, he'll address specifically, but also what you heard from Samantha was that they are using the newest technology and using osmosis. So they are recy, recirculating their water, treating it within their system and then reusing it. So it's minimal uses. It's, I'm not sure what the other car washes are doing, what they're set up with, but this will not. We have to demonstrate that to the satisfaction of the township engineer as it relates to, we're only allowed a certain amount of pressure off of that. We're easily within those numbers.
And how many vacuums are you proposing?
Samantha, you want, or the vacuum positions? Oh, Mike? This is Michael Gold of Stonefield Engineering.
Okay. Michael Gold, Stonefield Engineering.
What was your name again?
So, there will be 20 vacuums shifted well away from the residential. And then to speak to the water pressure question during building permit submission down the line, pending all approvals, you know, we have to make sure the pipes are sized adequately. And then we have to give the water demand. And then the township will let us know if there's adequate pressure or not. Because fire hydrants and fire pressure is a thing that we need to be cognizant of, any new development. So that'll be handled with the township engineer and everything will be up to snuff.
But, by the way, our planner today is Nani Wolf. She, Laura Hall's her evil twin, but that's actually Nani.
One, and just one follow-up on the vacuums. As Samantha indicated, it's my understanding that other car washes in the area have individualized powered vacuum machines, whatever. This place uses a system that uses one power machine for a line of vacuums that is then contained within a concrete structure to keep the decibels essentially at 44, which is effectively between whispering and rainfall. So, and they're being kept towards the front of the property.
I have a question for Nami. So the Quick Pass, I think Car Wash Individual was here and said that when they appeared before us, they had to provide the financials. I never remember us requiring that. I, I know some applicants bring forward their business plan and especially Home Depot when they came here. They do extensive research, which was nice information to know, but it really wasn't required for a decision.
Yeah, we do not require financial information, nor can we specifically request it. So there is no portion of our, so there's, there's a set number of criteria that the Planning Commission is forced to evaluate all rezonings by. And they cannot evaluate outside of that criteria set, right? There is no criteria within that set that discusses either finances or the number of businesses of a certain type of use. Similarly, in our special land uses, there is no criteria that addresses finances or the number of businesses of a certain type of use. So if it's not in those criteria specified in our zoning ordinance, we cannot evaluate it based on those things.
Can you expand on that?
If I misspoke, I apologize. It was for the special land permit or special use. We, we submitted traffic studies, all the things that he talked about.
Right.
That haven't been submitted yet. That's all I ask is for that information to be given to you before we make that decision.
Oh, okay. Thank you for the clarification. And you said you did a traffic study?
We, we have a traffic study. It's, it's in process between that and Michigan Department of Transportation and Wayne County. So yes.
So what happens if this were approved? And I've never known a traffic study to say there's going to be too much traffic, frankly. But should that happen, that, that there's too much traffic, what happens then?
So you mean if the Board of Trustees were to approve this conditional rezoning, then during the site plan phase, they came back with a traffic study that said there's too much traffic? You know, that, I guess that is a little of an odd situation, but the measures available to you at that point would be traffic calming measures as opposed to changing the use of the site, if that makes sense.
It doesn't make sense to me because if there's too much traffic, that's going to be calming down the traffic. People are not going to be able to move as quickly as they would like to. So. Do you have any other questions from the commission? Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I just wanted to clarify. It's always good to see Jack Knowles, have been, have worked with him on different things in the past. I, I want to clear up though, that he said there's no narrative submitted, but then he referenced the letter that I submitted in support of the zoning. There was a letter submitted with the zoning application laying out the elements of the conditions, including the plan itself at the time. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Also, I've spoken with your attorney. The consent judgment in its own terms, you'll see it, in its own terms basically says that when, that the use, the fitness use center ceases, it's, it just refers the site back to the permitted uses of Arc OS zoning. So it effectively has a sunset on it that says, when this use is stopping, you're now back to your regular zoning. So I'll get that to Mr. Bennett to look at it with, yeah, what's that? Yeah, what, that's fine. Yeah, Mr. Bennett was just pointing out that it runs with the land. There's no question. It was recorded to run with the land. But when this use applied, it sends that we're back to where we are. Otherwise, we would just be in front of a circuit judge having the conversation. So that's why we want to come to the Planning Commission. So, couple other points. I just want to make sure I cover each item. And, and Laura pointed out that we, while we understand there are people who are raising concerns, essentially the criteria in your ordinances that are written, that are the standards we have to go by, and that's, you properly landed on, that's what the review has done under. So we appreciate that in terms of the consideration. Other than that, I think that's all I have to offer. That and Samantha's going to follow up with a couple of quick comments.
So to refer to comments about analysis or understanding of the market, just a few numbers to throw out there for you guys. There's about 24, 27,000 cars per day that travel on Ann Arbor Road. We do look at that when identifying sites. There's about 136,000 cars per day that travel on 275. We also look at that when evaluating sites. We also have a membership model similar to a lot of these washes have mentioned. The point of a membership model is that you can use that membership at any of the washes. Quick Pass mentioned they have four washes in the area. We're looking at Henry Ford, who has offices here, Amazon, which was mentioned earlier, LA Fitness, a lot of convenience-based users as well in the area. Our users will have a membership base as well. They will be able to use, we will not only be pulling Plymouth residents, but residents using Plymouth for work, play, visiting. That is the model. So just a few numbers to throw out there. We do do some analysis when looking at the market to find the ideal location. We don't go around just placing car washes in any open vacant area. Also a note, El Car Wash does own this property, so they are invested in the community of Plymouth. At this point, they have actually done quite significant work to help improve the landscaping and different elements of the site since purchasing it from a previous owner. So just wanted to throw out a few, a few points of attention.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. All right. We're now talking to the commission for discussion or motion, whatever.
I think it's, I think it's pretty intense for this site. And I, I think it's also really close to the adjacent properties. I'm very, I have mixed emotions on this.
I'm really concerned about not following the master plan in our future land use plan. In setting precedent, I say this every time, if we make this change, then we're inviting every other business, every other slot on the street to ask for the same change as well as everywhere in the township. Because if we don't go by our master plan, then what are we doing here?
Well, I asked Nami, how, how do you feel that this is consistent with the master plan? That's what your recommendation is, justification.
Sure. So first of all, I want to apologize that Laura's not here. I know there was some confusion about who I am versus who wrote the memo. We look very similar. But, you know, I think that stretch is underutilized for what it is. There, this is not necessarily the only redevelopment option for this site that could be done. You know, the master plan says it's office. As a professional, I don't see office, exclusively office being a successful approach to these office sites anymore. However, you know, whether it's Arc or maybe even a mixed-use district, there are other options to redevelop these sites. Our master plan is from 2015. You know, it doesn't consider the loss of office uses. It doesn't consider the new innovations that are happening with ground floor retail with residential on top, or those other types of redevelopment options. So I guess this is, you know, this is not the only way forward for these sites. But, you know, my main feedback is that our master plan is a little outdated at this point.
Yeah.
No matter what you're considering, if there's, it's, it's worth recognizing that office is now something that's being mixed into other districts rather than having its own exclusive zone. As you saw with, for example, the Montessori School that went into the Midrise District, you know, that's an office building that had been totally vacant and was occupied by a school because there's just not that demand there. So having districts that are exclusively office made sense in pre-2019, but right now it just doesn't really reflect the way our, you know, the township is moving.
No, it doesn't.
So we have the office buildings to the east of the site. And I look at the master plan and it indicates residential high density as the future.
So I think that was a, a mistype on both the draft 2025 plan and the current 2015 plan. It still doesn't mean it is office. So that, that was a mistype by, by Laura. So apologies on her part.
Okay.
So then it sounds like we should address this when we update our master plan. Is this entire section, what do we want it to look like? Not take one piecemeal, one application and say, okay, this is what we're going to do. And instead, when we reevaluate our entire master plan, we should look at this entire corridor and make a good, sound decision of what we want it to change to or look like in the future.
Yeah. And this is a really important section, I think, in the master plan, this particular section of Ann Arbor Road that is underdeveloped. So we, we will be having a master plan discussion on October 4th, by the way. So we have a study session on that, which means there's no voting. It's just a discussion time. And we'll have a, you know, the future land use map for you guys to mark up and talk about. And I'm also going to bring up the idea of what we call flexible future land use designations that acknowledge that maybe just Arc is not the way forward. Maybe it's Arc or a mix with residential. You know, those kind of things that allow us to consider more options for these sites rather than hedging them into one thing for the next 20 years.
Yeah, I, I think you're, I think you're right. I mean, eventually this, this site is going to be retail or something similar because there just isn't the demand for office space.
And it could also go with medical, major medical across the street. It could go medical. It could go to a physical therapy. It could be, you know, outpatient clinic. Who knows? But with that major medical right across the street, it could be something similar.
And, you know, it's also important to note that every building is different, right? Some office buildings can be really easily renovated into residential units. Some office buildings cannot. You know, this building is 20 years older than the ones next to it, for example, and it's got a very different interior configuration. And that's something to maybe consider on the site plan level. But just worth noting that not all office buildings in the office district are created equally. I hope that answered your question. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I mean, there's a big difference between giving a special use permit for school to go into an office building and then to having a more intense use of the property. I tend to agree with Commissioner Barberina about concerns of setting a precedent if we rezone it and then it's, and then it stays that way. But then is that going to have a domino effect for the rest of it? And who knows what we're going to get for that? What other types of businesses? So I'm a little bit torn.
Yeah, I'm concerned too that if the, it does fall through with the, well, I guess he did say that it would have to be the, the two businesses, the Starbucks. the Starbucks and the car wash, that it wouldn't necessarily then revert to anything that was in the Ann Arbor Road corridor and not the OS. That's true.
Just reading through other recommendations, which to me were findings of fact.
So number three on the review, will the amendment correct an inequitable situation created by the zoning ordinance rather than merely grant special privileges? And you indicate that they won't grant a special privilege because it's consistent with the master plan. But what, but when I read that question, it talks about correcting inequitable situation. What would be the inequitable situation that we're correcting here?
So other than the fact that it's underutilized, there isn't a specific inequity with this. This particular line in the rezoning, it's really meant to address what we call spot zonings. Or zonings that were intentionally made to exclude or isolate land uses in the past. So to give you two examples, you know, for decades and decades, sometimes residential communities were closed off smaller and smaller and smaller intentionally by townships to try to exclude certain numbers from the community. That would be an inequitable situation created in the past that could be rectified by a rezoning. That doesn't happen very much in Plymouth Township. But the other one to note is what I call a spot zoning. A spot zoning is when you grant one landowner special privileges on their site that the other ones around them do not have. So the one I always like to use as an example is you have a subdivision, right? A residential neighborhood. And one landowner says, hey, I want to turn my home into a corner store. And the future land use map does not provide for that, right? There's, there's no way, they said this is going to be all residential. If you grant that landowner, that rezoning to provide a corner store, and then their neighbor comes up and they say, hey, you know, I'd also like to do a store in this area, and I'm, not for you though. That would be an inequitable situation that, you know, we've created through the zoning ordinance. If that makes sense. That's considered a spot zoning. So a spot zoning doesn't just mean, you know, one zone surrounded by another zone, because that happens all the time. It means a zone that, you know, specifically gives one landowner a privilege that the neighboring ones do not have. So in this case, I think it's important what you're talking about, which is if you were to recommend approval of rezoning to this, the ARC district, you know, it would be setting a precedent for the ones around it. Because you wouldn't want to just be giving one landowner a special privilege. Although, do you know that a way of making sure that, you know, you're checking the privilege of this site is to offer these voluntary conditions that the landowner has put forward. But I know it's a complex thing to try to explain orally without maps. So does anyone have questions on what a spot zoning is?
Only thing I can recall that, that I know the commission at the time anguished over was where the scholars, charter schools located on North Territorial.
Yeah, and charter schools are a challenging one as well. Because if they receive any state funding, they are then exempted from local zoning requirements. So in order to be subject to local zoning, it has to be a truly private institution with absolutely no state or federal funding. So that's a tricky one that comes before us.
Question? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Let me continue with the office buildings to the east of the site. So let's say one of the office buildings goes vacant. They just can't get any tenants. And they want to redevelop one of the office buildings. And they want to come in on the same rezone, conditional rezone as were being presented here tonight. If we denied that, would then this be considered spot zoning?
It could be. But it's also important to note that you would have to reevaluate the six criteria for that next application. So if there was some physical feature of the site that changed your answer to one of these six, then it wouldn't necessarily be considered a bias. But if it's literally the exact same conditions for both sites, you know.
Question for Kevin. Does, do all six criteria need to have positive findings of fact? Or if one fails, can the whole thing fail?
No, they don't. They have to be weighed individually. The most important criteria under case law, not under statute, is only one. The most important criteria is that the proposed rezoning be consistent with the township master plan. Because if that is the case, then any presumed, any rezoning is presumed valid. In the event it comes down to litigation, if it's consistent, if the rezoning is consistent with the master plan, the burden of proof would be on the challenger of the rezoning. Because the rezoning would be presumed valid.
And then is it important that we, we discuss, we, sorry, it's getting late in the day, that we present findings in fa, findings of fact for all of the criteria? That we discuss all of the criteria? Or is it?
Yes, to the extent each, that any specific criteria is applicable to this, there should be findings of fact on each criteria. One thing I would like to say that came up that I just discovered tonight is that this area is zone consent judgment. And the consent judgment goes back to the 70s with Vic Tanny. And my knowledge, or my recollection is that there was an amendment to the consent judgment in 2016 for applied fitness. There were certain changes to the Vic Tanny judgment. And that may affect the mechanism of this proposed rezoning rather than the substance of the rezoning.
I'm like.
Can you elaborate on that a little further?
Well, the Vic Tanny judgment states that the, I'll read it right from the judgment. The judgment and all provisions here shall nurture the benefit of, they shall be binding upon the respective parties, their heirs, successors and assigns. They shall constitute covenants running with the land and binding upon the land in perpetuity. And all persons having any interest in or to said land or any part thereof shall be subject to this. When a, when a condition runs with the land, that means it continues in perpetuity until it's changed. Now, because of that, the proper mechanism to affect this proposed rezoning, in quotes, would be to amend the consent judgment.
Okay.
The consent judgment with Plymouth Township or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So my apologies.
I thought you said something about Wayne County.
Well, it was done in the Wayne County.
Oh, Wayne County Circuit.
My apologies.
Calvin Rock versus Township of Plymouth.
Yeah, I kind of vaguely remember that.
So my apologies if I missed any of that earlier. I'm glad we have Kevin here.
So would you recommend to us that we table this application until that consent judgment is reviewed or?
It should, it's not subject to renewal. I would, I would.
A review?
I would suggest that the proposed rezoning be tabled so we can look into these procedural issues.
I agree.
And I would say, having heard that just now, I would recommend the same.
I have some comments before we take that step. First of all, I, the plan that was presented to us, you all haven't seen the architectural review or anything, but the elevation of the car wash is a very attractive elevation. The second thing is, the existing site, as you all know, is a complete mess. And I was hoping, Bob, could you pull up that last page? There you go. Just go down, go back one page.
Right here? What are you looking for?
I'm looking for the page that shows the landscape plan, which is, I think, the fourth page of that document right there.
Is it here?
Yeah, keep going. One more.
There it is.
No, that's, yes, that's it. So basically what the applicant is proposing here, the northern border of that, the top of that drawing is all of the residences along the street to the north. And you can see there's a whole bunch of little green circles across there. To my count, those are 27 or 25 red cedar plants. And then just below them are another seven green giant arborvitae's. And green giant arborvitae's grow very quickly. They become very thick and very, they fill out very nicely. So my comment here is that if I were in your shoes, I would also be very concerned about these uses. But I also think that we need to evaluate that putting in that level of plant growth would really go a long way toward making the situation better than it is right now, where we have that decrepit fence going back there. And that because of the elevation of the land, in some cases, the fence is only about five feet tall. And I don't know if you all have seen, looked at some of those homes there, but there's a couple, and one home in particular where there appears to be a sunroom, and it's literally only 15 feet from that wall. So this really is a concern. So I, I guess what I'm saying here, and my first part of this, is that I think the applicant has gone a long way to try to address some of the issues in a positive manner. And I do think that this would be attractive along Ann Arbor Road. On the other hand, I have concerns. It seems to me that, I've been on the planning commission for two years, and I just worry that we somehow, we're always looking at the new without thinking about the old. And I'm thinking about all the homeowners that live along that street. And when they bought their homes, and I think they had a reasonable expectation that the land uses were going to stay reasonably commensurate with the way they were at the time they bought their homes. And this is undoubtedly a major change in the land use. And I just worry sometimes that we don't put enough emphasis when we make our decisions on how, on the rights of the people who are there now versus new people coming in. And the fact that Plymouth Township is a township with homeowners and residents, that's what makes our township so great. I just feel like sometimes we don't give that enough weight. I'm, on another level, I'm concerned because I pulled up the future land use map for 2025. And folks, it says Ann Arbor Road Corridor Office for that series of things. But what also bothers me is that I've looked at the entire Ann Arbor Road corridor. That is virtually the only part of that Ann Arbor Road corridor that is assigned Ann Arbor Road Corridor Office applications. There's an area on Hagerty, just south of Ann Arbor Road, that's assigned that. But on Ann Arbor Road itself, that's really the only area, with other than a couple of very small exceptions, that is Ann Arbor Road Corridor Office. I also believe that with the hospital going across the street, that there will eventually be more need for ancillary-type businesses and offices that support the Henry Ford Hospital. So I'm really torn on this one, I really am. I think the applicant's made a real effort, but I also am very concerned. I'm also, to your point, extremely concerned about the fact that we seem to be okay with making exceptions to our master plan and our zoning map. And every time we make an exception, we create a, a case, if you will, for somebody else to come in and also ask for an exception. And I just think we need to think that every one of these we look at is also creating a precedent that we could not like in the future. My final comment is that Mr. Amon made a number of additional comments tonight on the conditional rezoning, additional commitments. I would want to see those in writing before we, not that I don't trust you, but I would just want to see them in writing before we make a final decision. So those are my comments.
They would be required to be in writing, absolutely. That's a condition. And just to answer your question, medical offices and other office uses are permitted in the general ARC district, which is part of why you see so little OS ARC on the future land use.
They are not permitted?
No, they are.
They are, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so they're, they're already kind of mixed into the general ARC district. And then the OS ARC is really meant for those special areas adjacent to residential homes.
But they could do a restaurant here, right?
In the current zoning or if it were ARC?
Oh, it is ARC.
Oh, no, it's OS ARC.
Oh, that's right.
OS ARC.
If they rezoned it to ARC, then yes, restaurants are a permitted use, as is, you know, light retail, you know, some other less intensive uses.
But this has been, the OS ARC is a buffer in a transition between Ann Arbor Road and then all of the residents to the north.
Yeah, I think the real challenge here today is that we're in the middle of our master plan update, right? And we're also in the middle of a global transition where we reconsider what office is supposed to be and how we mix office into our land use map, right? And this application is really at the intersection of all those things. And I'm not going to pretend this isn't a really complex issue, because it is. And this is a really unique one before you. So if you want more information on this application, especially the consent judgment, which I would like a second chance to review as well, let us know what you want to see.
Table?
I, I believe that. So that was a suggestion made by the attorney. And now that we know that there's a consent judgment attached to this, I think we have to tread carefully that way.
Have to table it.
Yeah.
60 days or?
How long do you think it would take to research the consent judgment?
I would recommend.
Less than 30 days.
Less than 30 days?
How long would it take to file an amendment, though?
To the consent judgment? Well, that would have to ultimately be approved by the board. But to be safe, it might be advisable for the planning commission to make a recommendation to the board with respect to amending the consent judgment.
So not table in it?
No, table it. So we can look into the consent judgment issues because there was an amendment to the consent judgment in 2016, which I do not have access to currently. I need to look at that to see exactly what was amended. If there was a sunset provision in that, then we will not need to consider consent judgment issues.
Could do 90 days, I mean, you can, they.
Okay.
And I would like to say, historically for rezonings, it's somewhere between 90 days and six months. So just something to consider is that the holidays are coming up. So thinking about your ability to obtain a quorum and also the applicant's ability to appear. Just something, if you're thinking a little longer.
Well, they could always request an addition, as an extension, if they're running into some roadblocks somewhere through this whole process, so.
But if, if we recommended denial to the board of trustees and the board of trustees denied it, then the consent judgment really doesn't matter, does it?
It would remain.
It'll have to be reviewed.
I don't want to say it doesn't matter, because as I see it right now, and I'm not saying that's how it is, because I need to see the 2016 amendment. But as it stands now, it does not look like the property is subject to rezoning.
So we couldn't deny it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be valid?
Well, we'd get us beyond our jurisdiction.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay.
Maybe this is also something that we could bring forward to you for your study session too, like a copy of the consent judgment, you know.
And I guess we should table it. I mean, if we table it, does it still go before, it would still go before the board of trustees? Or do they need to know one way or the other?
No, they need a recommendation from you. So you have three recommendation options. Approval, actually no, sorry, you have two.
Two, right.
Approval or denial. If it's a special land use, you have a couple of options. But yeah, approval or denial. And then if it, if you table it, it would then come back to you at a later meeting date. And it would not be renoticed. So anyone who is interested in this item, I always encourage you to please sign up for the Township e-news blast. And also, by state law, if you would like to receive updates on planning commission business, but you do not like email or use email or anything like that, we can accommodate you with a print version. So just know that. If you want to receive updates via alternative means, come, you know, call our office, let us know, and we'll make sure that we accommodate you for that.
So were the appropriate people noticed that this was going to come before us?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Traditional notices went out, you know, it's a conditional rezoning. But similarly, if you table a special land use, it doesn't, they renotice it when it comes back at a later date, right?
Yeah. Okay. So we have, do we have to, do findings of fact with this today?
With a table, no. Correct, Kevin? I mean, I've never seen that.
They're just table in it.
I postponed, postponed.
Postponing.
That's true, postponement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone application 2493, the car wash and drive-through restaurant conditional rezoning for up to six months.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Boyd to postpone application 2493 for up to six months. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thanks for coming out.
Yes. This is a request to the commission. If you'd be very kind to put the past material... Could you very kindly put the past materials online for people to...
They're out there.
They're online.
Pardon?
Yeah, they're out there.
Yeah, I know, they're online. Could you also put the applicants, the application and the applicants' materials online? Those are not yet done here to review.
I think they're all on.
So nice, I have a complete packet online.
Normally, normally, the complete packet is online, so if it's not this time, that's our error.
Yeah, I think we did miss one item in that packet, so my apologies. We realize that we missed it, and we will make sure we'll do a better job next time. Yeah, no, that's very valid. And for anyone, you know, also, it was posted online a day late, so I apologize to anyone that was looking for it Friday at noon, it was a little later posted. My apologies.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. We have application 2494, manor clothing, tentative and final site plan approval is being requested. Ms. Wilber, would you walk us through your report?
Yeah, absolutely. Just going to take a quick drink. One second. All right. So this application is for the site commonly and fondly known as the Trading Post in Plymouth Township at the intersection of Corinne Street and Ann Arbor Road on the south side. This is an application to renovate and repurpose the building that was previously the Trading Post into a men's suit shop. So this is, we would call it maybe an amended site plan or revised site plan. There's already an existing building on the site. They'd be changing some aspects of it, but keeping other ones that are currently there. And this would be a switch from, you know, one permitted retail use to a different permitted retail use in the same building. And when an applicant wants to modify the layout of the site, it comes before you, as opposed to, for example, you know, the Domino's Pizza, they weren't changing anything on their site, so they just switched permitted uses. But this one, they actually do want to make some updates to the parking lot, to the building facade, to other aspects of the circulation on the site that warranted review by the Planning Commission. So just to summary, this is an 8,590 square foot building with two units, previously known as the Trading Post. Building A, which is the eastern unit, we turned into a clothing and tailoring store, whereas Building B will remain a white box for a future tenant. And that future tenant similarly would have to be a permitted use in the Ann Arbor Road Corridor District. The site consists of two parcels occupying about a half an acre of land at the southwest corner of Ann Arbor Road and Corinne Street. So to get into our site plan review, I am going to hit what I call the highlighted items, which are the underlined ones in your packet, because I think those are the ones we want to draw your attention to. And before I get into that, I should also note that before you is, where did I put it? There is a response letter from the applicant. It's got a bit of orange at the top. Here it is. It looks like this. So this is...
Was then a reduced copy?
Yeah, it's a little small.
I think I couldn't read it.
I'm happy to read off the answers to this one. But this is a response to some of the underlined items in our letter. So as you know, our letters go out a week in advance, so we can't modify them once they've been posted on the website. That wouldn't be fair to the public. But we happen to address these responses as I go through the letter. So, starting on page two of our letter, the first underlined item is that there was a discrepancy between the dimensions on two of the sheets, and we would just ask that those dimensions be corrected. That happens sometimes. However, the dimensions are in compliance, they just need to be fixed on the one sheet where they were not, you know, corresponding.
So was there a response to that?
Yeah, we, in our recommendation, we'd be recommending that they modify the dimensions on the one incorrect sheet.
But what we received from the applicant, as I said, I couldn't read it to see...
Yes, so they said the dimensions will be updated. I think they noted that it's just an incorrect item on the sheet. So the second item is on page three at the bottom. We noted that the proposed dumpster truck plan shows that the dumpster would be on the far east side of the site, and we recommended relocating it to the western side of the site to improve the truck access. And in the response letter, the applicant noted that they will relocate the dumpsters to the west side of the parking lot and the snow storage to the east side. So that was in response to our letter. The next item is on page four, under pedestrian access and circulation. So we noted that the western interior sidewalk must be expanded from three feet, which is its current measurement, to four feet in width. And that's to accommodate, you know, the average wheelchair or person walking down that site. It's a basic requirement of our ordinance. And the applicant did note that they can increase the sidewalk to four feet if the Commission agrees to reduce the maneuvering lane width to 17 feet. Just based on our ordinance, 17 feet is more than enough maneuvering width. Our minimum is 15 for a site that's laid out with these angled parking spaces, so that would be acceptable per our ordinance. All right, so the next, most of the items are clustered under number eight, which is landscaping, screening, and buffering. So the first one is that section 26.12 of our ordinance requires that when a non-residential use comes in next to a residential use, the wall must also be accompanied by plantings. We were just discussing this as well for the previous application. We require a mixture of deciduous trees and shrubs, and really, it's a beautification measure for the site that accompanies the wall. The applicant has indicated that a landscaping strip could be installed if the Planning Commission agrees to reduce the maneuvering lane width to 26 feet. So right now, the way the site is laid out, it's all paved in the back, and the parking is kind of spread apart as far as it can. It's really up against the wall and up against the building. So they'd be proposing to shift that parking away from the wall, construct the landscaping strip, and thereby kind of shrink the lane between the two parking spaces. So 26 feet is, again, much wider than our ordinance requires, and it would also allow them to accommodate that landscaping strip. So that's one of them. And then they did also note that they can accommodate the five deciduous trees along the wall unless they are not permitted by the easement with utilities. So at the rear of this site, there's a variety of utility poles that pass over them, and we recognize that there is jurisdictions beyond our control that sometimes prohibit where deciduous trees can be planted. So it might be worth considering, you know, types of deciduous trees that do not grow past a certain height, or perhaps allowing the applicant to substitute some ornamental trees like crab apples in a place that would be more appropriate. So it's up to the Planning Commission to make those kinds of concessions, but we do still recommend requiring the five trees at the back, whether they be deciduous or ornamental. And again, if DTE or Wayne County says you can't have them, okay, that's beyond our power right now. All right, so the next item is that the landscape islands must have a minimum width of 10 feet and a maximum area of, or minimum area of 160 square feet. And the applicant has indicated that they can revise the landscape requirements to meet these minimum widths and areas. However, they cannot install the trees that we typically require on the landscape islands, because both landscape islands house a utility pole. Like each landscape island actively has a utility pole on it. And we also understand that that is a restriction on the site. You know, they've offered to do some ornamental shrubs on those islands instead, and that is, again, something that's to the discretion of the Commission, whether or not you'd allow that. We're trying to avoid a conflict between the trees that we typically require on a landscape island and the utility poles that are currently there that cannot be used. So just something to consider. But they have indicated that they're willing to increase the size of the islands to meet our requirements and provide those ornamental shrubs. The next one is that the applicant must demonstrate that there's adequate water supply to the areas and that they are irrigated. So they said, where is, hold on, I'm just trying to find my this one. Number seven, they did note on the plans that all the areas will be irrigated, so that will be provided. All right, let's keep going. So on the next page, page five, is our note on materials. So we require a variety of planting materials on the site on the ARC Corridor District. We require that plants be of different sizes when they're planted, so it doesn't create this one homogenous look throughout the site. And we just asked that they provide additional specificity that was missing to provide us with the species, the DBH for those species, to make sure that we're meeting those variation requirements for the site. And in their response, they did indicate that the final landscape plan can be revised to include the species and other requirement, you know, information required by the township. The next one is under miscellaneous, is that it says White Lake Township in one section, and it's supposed to say Plymouth Township, and they said they will fix that. And the last one on here is that on the elevations, you will see that there are, you know, it says manor clothing in some spaces. The applicant has acknowledged that signage has to be under a separate permit. They included that just for your purposes of illustration for those elevations. Because, you know, they want to make sure when they're planning the facade, that it's big enough to accommodate the signs that they're planning in the future. But those signs will not be permitted as a part of this application. So that's a lot. But aside from the things that I just mentioned, the design of the site, the layout of the site, the dimensions of the site, and the overall elevations, all meet the criteria for the Ann Arbor Road Corridor District and our regulations for building design. So essentially, our recommendation is to grant tentative and final site plan approval for this updated site plan on the nine conditions listed before you. Essentially, those capture all of the items that I just mentioned in our letter that are outstanding, to make sure that those will be resolved administratively after your approval. So that's what's before you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And we have also the letter from the fire department that they haven't, haven't found any deficiencies, so.
And then this item, you know, it's only a minor site plan update. It doesn't have utility changes that would warrant engineering review, but we do have Lisa here if you have questions for it.
Do you have anything to add, Lisa, or?
No, we didn't.
Okay, great. So I'll call upon the two best gentlemen here that are dressed. You would come forward, and do you have anything you would care to, yeah, up to the podium, add or say, or?
My name is Pat Mano, this is my son Anthony, and our architects are here. And it's a real privilege to be here, and we're excited about coming to this beautiful city of Plymouth. We had a great run in Dearborn, been there for 53 years, where my parents started the business as two immigrants living the American dream. But this is the future here. And we do live in Northville, so we are involved in the communities quite a bit, and hopefully we'll be an asset to this beautiful city. And my son will take it to another level. So my days, maybe I got 20 years left and that's it. But he's going to take over, so thank you for the opportunity.
Hi, my name is Anthony Mano. Not a whole lot to add there, but it is a privilege to be working alongside my father and carrying on my grandparents' legacy. And to do it here, I have two young kids at home, so a 10-minute drive to work is a lot better than a 35-minute drive to work. So we're very excited, and we can't wait to get started. So thank you very much for listening and for working with our wonderful architects, Catherine and Chris.
Well, I think, speaking for myself, I think it's a great improvement on an existing building. We were talking about upgrading some of the buildings that we have, and not necessarily fallen in disrepair, but have become dated, and you've taken that building and have really made a nice job of it.
Thank you.
Do you have other locations?
No, we have one location in Dearborn currently.
Will that relocate to Plymouth, or will you keep that one open as well?
We don't know as of right now. We're just, we're definitely going to have to operate on two storefronts for some time just with the move and the transition. There's a lot, but that is a daily conversation that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, I presently work seven days a week. I'm not sure how much more I can do. I'm torn, because business, I mean, Dearborn's been good to us, but now the future is here. We're excited about it, but I don't think I can work more than that. So we'll see what happens.
It's hard to predict, and we appreciate you taking the risk, and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just to reiterate your comments about the elevations here, look really, really nice, so.
I agree. Looks very nice.
We intend this store to be a flagship. We want to be proud of a little bit of Italy coming to Plymouth. There's a lot of Italians here, so hopefully two more won't bother you. We're excited.
Okay, good. All right, are we ready for a motion?
So I may, just to ask prior to the motion for the purpose of recording, what is the Commission's take on the tree items that I mentioned with regards to the utility?
I didn't hear any objections to it.
Is that the waiver of the green belt adjacent to the southern property? Is that what you're referring to?
It wouldn't be a waiver of the green belt. It would be a waiver of the requirement for one deciduous tree for each landscape island.
Because of the poles, right?
Because of the utility pole. So you need to specify the reason for that deviation.
Do we need to put that into motion?
Yeah, so for example, if you were to say move to approve the tentative and final based on the conditions in the planner's report with the modification of XYZ.
So again, I couldn't really, I couldn't really look at the landscape plan, but what kind of trees are proposed for there?
So that's the other thing they need to provide is the species of each tree. Right now, it just says deciduous tree. But it would have to be one that is allowed under our ordinance. We don't...
I didn't, one, that would be what?
Allowed under our ordinance. So they wouldn't be able to put in like a Ginkgo or the ones that we currently prohibit.
Well, I'm just concerned about utility wires and...
Yeah. And the other thing you could allow is to substitute the five deciduous trees at the rear of the site with ornamental trees. So we consider, for example, a crab apple to be an ornamental tree rather than a deciduous tree. It is deciduous. It drops its leaves in the winter, but it is ornamental in its size. So if you were to make modifications to this site, that would be my recommended change based on what they've provided and what Laura had written last week.
Well, would you and Laura look at the, so are you expecting a final landscape plan?
Yes, yeah, they would have to...
So you'll be reviewing it, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes. We would be reviewing it in our office to make sure it complies with the ordinance and whatever conditions you stipulated.
So does that need to be part of the motion, too?
That it's administrative?
Subject to review of the final landscape plan?
Let me see how it's currently written. Yeah, subject to the following conditions. If you wanted to be really specific, you could say, "subject to the following conditions, which shall be reviewed and approved administratively." That's the typical language.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I move that we grant tentative and final site plan approval for the manor clothing and tailoring, PC application 2494, given the nine items listed in the recommendation part of the planner's report, and that there's a waiver of the one tree for each landscape island, and that the five deciduous trees in the back could be ornamental trees if necessary per DTE, and that those items be approved administratively.
Support?
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Boyd granting tentative and final site plan approval to application 2494, subject to set conditions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Next is application 2466, Lycera Fund Automotive Special Land Use.
All right, thank you, Commission. I should note, the applicant did have to leave just because of how long this meeting has been taking. I think he had some family obligations, but it doesn't affect our recommendation. So since the last time you saw this, six months ago, the applicant has made progress on submitting a site plan for the site. However, having reviewed it in our office, there are still some items that are lacking. So as it was presented, and I believe you all got a copy of it, you could see it was a big improvement over the one that was, you know, color blocks, a rough sketch from six months ago. But there's still some outstanding items. Notably, the screening along the main corridor is lacking. There's also just some lack of attention to how vehicles will circulate through the site, and we believe that, you know, with another round of edits with the engineer, this could be resolved. However, today, we don't believe that it's ready for you to make a decision either for approval or denial. So we are recommending today that you table this item for another six months. That would be a total of one year if you include the previous table, which is pretty normal for, you know, previous tables that the Commission has done. And allow the applicant to prepare a completely accurate, you know, vetted site plan to come before you for your consideration for this special land use. In the meantime, you know, the site is currently approved to be operated for minor automotive repair, oil changes, that sorts of thing, so it would still be operating as that. But, you know, this application for the special land use is for a combination of things, like sales and major automotive repair and, you know, cleaning, all that stuff. So that would not be allowed. That's, you know, a future thing to consider six months down the line. So that was a lot to say. But ultimately, our recommendation is a table for another six months to allow the applicant to further revise their plans.
I do see some people in the audience, is anyone here, this is not a public hearing, did you come for this application, and do you have comments that you wish to make? No decision will be made today, but come, come for it if you're, if you have a comment. Otherwise, be sure to come back when...
This isn't a public hearing, this is just informal comments.
Yes, it is.
And we do have one written comment.
Do you want me to read that one in?
No, it's okay, as long, we have it printed for the record. You'll have to summarize what it says.
Okay.
I do see some people in the audience. Is anyone here, this is not a public hearing, did you come for this application, and do you have comments that you wish to make? No decision will be made today, but come for it if you have a comment. Otherwise, be sure to come back when-
This isn't a public hearing. This is just informal comments.
Yes, it is.
And we do have one written comment.
Do you want me to read that one in?
No, it's okay. As long, we have it printed for the record. You'll have to summarize what it says.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. Hello again. Brent Gustamsky, and I'm on the end unit of the condos right next to the proposed site. I just wanted to bring it up to your attention. Since we had last spoken, there have been violations about the nature of business on that lot. So first of all, he told you guys to your faces that he wouldn't be doing major auto repair. And since then, we have pictures of over dozens of cars that have been dropped off in total wreck condition and being repaired on site. It has been going on. We've been making note of it. But, you know, my first point is that if he told you guys he wouldn't do it and he's doing it, then what makes you think he's gonna be compliant with anything else? It's very disappointing as well as, you know, it's not minor repair to begin with, and he's operating that way. Still, going to some of the points that were made earlier tonight as well, you know, if this is disturbing the local residents as such, I mean, the gentleman who's not here anymore, he made the statement from the master plan that, you know, it shouldn't be interfering with residents. And so far, you know, if it stays there, it's gonna encourage some of us to put our homes up for sale and leave. And if that happens, it's gonna devalue the property potentially. Can't guarantee anything, but then it's gonna affect our home values, and then it's gonna affect our life of the following, and then the next person, and then the next person. Those are my concerns as a member of the board and as an owner. So I'm voicing for hopefully the majority that could remain. So thank you guys very much.
Okay, thank you for coming. Any other comments?
Patricia Graubarger, 42768 Gateway Drive. I'm the third condo in, back up directly to the garage. And I'm very new here. I've only moved in the last couple of months. But I thought when I purchased the condo in April that there was a barrier of trees. Am I correct in this? And now it seems to be all clear-cut, and there's no sound barrier anymore. So we do have that cement, not cement, uh, brick fence, but we need greenery. We need something. This isn't an eyesore. It's to the detriment of Plymouth Township if any of you have ever looked at it. It's a lot. It has potholes. It's muddy. It's dirty. It's horrible. It needs to be cleaned. Something needs to be done with this place. I'm not sure that they should be given approval for anything out there except to knock it down. Thank you.
Well, this is still large. So you need to come more often. So it still can operate as a auto repair place.
Yes, it is considered what we call a legal nonconformity. So that means that it was established under a prior zoning ordinance when automotive facilities were allowed on that site. We have changed the zoning ordinance since then, but because they've been in continuous operation, albeit at a low level, for decades, they get to continue that use. When a nonconformity falls vacant for, I believe it's one hundred and eighty days in Plymouth. It might be three hundred and sixty-five. It's a hundred and eighty. Kevin's nodding. Then they lose their right to continue that use, but that has not happened on this site. So for example, the cleaners is a really good example of something that's lost its right to continue as a nonconforming use, the Tate's cleaners.
Lenny, you have a question about the packet of photographs that we got? Who provided these? Did the property owner, or is it provided by like a-
The photographs?
Yeah.
I don't know, because Laura sent out the packets, so I apologize. I can't answer that question.
You sent the picture? Okay, so this was, I was confused as to who provided, didn't say-
That's correct. We have had multiple ordinance visits for this site over the past six months, so.
You've had multiple what? What did you order?
Ordinance, code enforcement visits. Things like, there was some orange fencing, the operations of the site, you know, things like that have been a continuous item over the last six months. And, you know, like finances, that's not necessarily something the planning commission has the power to consider, but it's just something that is correct.
Where are the trees that were clear-cut?
She had referred to. They will be required to replace those trees. That was done improperly, yes.
I just lost my place here. Well, I would encourage you to, you know, make note of things that bother you or you think are not appropriate. There won't be a public hearing when he does return, so I encourage you to sign up for the, you know, the email notifications and-
I will say, for this site, we are going to send out a courtesy notice to all the adjacent homeowners, because we know you really want one.
We'll make an exception. You know what, maybe, sir, maybe you can come back up because it's hard for us to hear and-
And it doesn't get on the camera then?
It's been a long day. So basically, we did attempt to get he and his architects together, and that just never ended up coming to fruition. We're all readily available. So my original point was my biggest concern personally is compliance, right?
Right. The last time you guys were here, you guys were gonna talk, but-
The most that we got was we had a small chat outside the door and then promises and then nothing.
That was it, huh?
We gave him every bit of our contact information. So that is what I was concerned about. It's like, gonna tell you guys everything you want to hear. But when you guys turn your heads, it's gonna do whatever I want, so. Just afraid of what it could turn into even if we get it to a baseline of something.
Which trees were clear-cut?
Oh, he got it the whole yard.
Yeah, so it's on different sides, but the south, southeast and north side all had select trees removed.
All those trees are gone, Bob.
Yeah.
They're all gone?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's more square now is all I can describe it as. So we noticed the tree removal, obviously, because it stands right out, and they were issued, you know, a fine for that, and, you know, they will have to reimburse and replace those trees. So we don't, we can't ever know exactly what was removed, but when a developer does that and they just remove stuff without ever telling us, we basically assume the highest and best trees were there, right?
He had named off a few at the last meeting that he took down, and then he said that they were on their way out anyways, but it should be in the notes somewhere, at least some of them.
And if there's no way for the township to verify that a tree was dead, we assume it was alive.
Correct. So, other than that, thank you guys again.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So you are recommending tabling?
Or postponing.
Or postponing?
Table or postpone, yes. You know, I know there is a legal difference between the two, but at this point it's-
So three months?
Six months.
Six months, okay.
And part of that is because one winter is coming, and two typically special land use postponements in the past have been given a total of one year. So that will allow the applicant a total of one year.
I drove by the place again today, and it looks awful. And I think that you have to, my view is, you have to look at the applicant's behavior now and then see how that influences the future. I don't see any improvement versus what it was before. As a matter of fact, my impression is it's probably gone a little bit downhill since last time. So I just, I wish the applicant was here because I believe that we need to set an expectation that, you know, he's making lots of promises, but his performance right now is not suggesting to me that we can take those promises with much degree of certainty. I'm choosing my words carefully.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone Application 2466, the Sarah Fund Automotive for up to six months.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Berry to postpone Application 2466 up to six months. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Next is the Application 2482, the Penske Final Site Plan.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. So this is the third time that Penske is now before you. Back in May of 2023, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and granted special land use approval for the outdoor storage component of this site, which will be a Penske truck facility. And this one, as opposed to the Penske facility that's on the other side of the freeway, is more for the storage and operation of their trucks, not as much for the, you know, retail walk-up style part of that. But it will include a office, storage facility, gas canopy, fuel pumps, and parking lot. The last time this came before you, there were several outstanding items that you wanted resolved after granting tentative site plan approval, and I'm here to report on which of those have been resolved and what remains outstanding. So I'm gonna just, again, hit the highlights that are underlined. So on page three at the top is the most important one, which is the trees. We noted that the tree replacement ratios in their new landscape plan are not correct, and the issue there was that some trees were double-counted. So for example, we require trees along the frontage of the road, right, in the landscaping strip, or what we call the lawn extension. Those cannot be counted towards a tree replacement. And, you know, this is a mistake that we often see applicants accidentally double-counting trees that are required towards their replacement ratio, and we know that they have to adjust that to show the accurate replacements. So for example, you're required to have one landscape tree per island, right? That can't be counted towards replacing the trees that you remove. Those are two separate requirements. Does that make sense? Yeah. So while a total of one hundred and fifty-five inches of caliper and new plantings will be added, additional replacement trees are necessary. The replacement ratio must be adjusted to, one, account for the heritage trees, which have a different replacement ratio, and remove the double-counted trees that were accidentally included, you know, the street trees on this site. So we don't believe this is, you know, a major item. Essentially, it's more trees are required, but it is something worth noting. So the next item is on page four, which is under landscaping, screening, and buffering. So this one just says that the applicant must demonstrate that there's an adequate water supply to all landscape areas, meaning we need to see, you know, a promise that they'll be irrigated in a way that they'll be irrigated. And additionally, we noted that while some parking lot landscaping has been provided, additional screening is necessary from the Schoolcraft Road right-of-way. And it's recommended that additional plantings be added to create a year-round visual screen. And that means specifically additional evergreens be added to create that year-round visual screen. And you'll see in the little table right there, we note that the tree replacement needs adjustment, and then also the stormwater landscaping, sorry, had to pick up there, stormwater landscaping needs adjustment as well to accommodate more plantings beyond just a seed mix. So when we do stormwater detention ponds, as you might remember, we did one for the self-storage facility that's at the intersection of Schoolcraft and Haggerty. It's not just, you know, grasses and native seeds. It's a mix of trees and shrubs and native plantings and that. So, you know, similarly, that's just lacking some trees that would be needed to bring it into compliance with our ordinance standards. And again, none of these are discretionary items. These are all just items necessary to bring it into line with what our code requires. Lastly, our item on page five is about the building design and architecture. So this one is a discretionary item for the planning commission to consider, which is that the elevations of the gasoline canopy and fuel pumps have been provided, and the commission may require, wish to require greater architectural detail on the canopy and the foundation poles. So for this one, think about the intersection of Sheldon and Ann Arbor Road, where on one side we have the Kroger gas station that has those brick poles, and on the other side we have the Marathon that has just the straight metal ones. And our department, we always recommend brick poles. In part, they hold up better, they look nicer. You know, they stand the test of time a little bit more than the metal ones, but this is something that's up to the commission. Again, this is outside the Ann Arbor Road corridor district. It doesn't have the design regulations that we have on Ann Arbor Road, but something worth considering. And then the dumpster enclosure currently features vinyl slats, so chain link with the woven vinyl. That's prohibited in the township. So they would need to just provide us with a revised dumpster plan that shows the pressure-treated wood that's typical of a dumpster enclosure. So those are all the outstanding items. Our department considers most of these items pretty minor. Adding more trees under the species that have already been approved, switching out a dumpster gate, and, you know, possibly, depending on what the commission votes on, changing the design of the fuel pumps. So based upon the general compliance with the zoning ordinance, we recommend the Planning Commission grant final site plan approval for the proposed Penske truck facility contingent on the following items. The revised landscape plan be corrected to show the required number of replacement trees and add the new landscape areas as identified in this report. Greater architectural detail be added for the gas station to mirror the masonry materials of the primary building. Updated gates on the dumpster enclosure be provided to comply with the allowable materials per the ordinance, and as always, no signage be approved as a part of the application. So that's our recommendation before you today.
So the greater architectural detail for the gas station, is that gonna be looked at by the Administrative Review Committee?
Yes, it would. So you could specify exactly what they'd be made of, but typically, I would say just matching the building is the best way to go forward with those. You know, sometimes it looks weird if you have a split-face gas station, or sorry, split-face block pole and then a brick building, you know, but anyway.
And we have the engineering report?
Good evening. We have received a site plan supplemental for the Penske truck leasing. Our letter is dated September fourteenth of this year. The following are our comments. The side access will be provided by two proposed driveways of Schoolcraft Road. The traffic circulation plan should be revised to show turning movements around the site and full maneuver movement entering and exiting Schoolcraft for emergency vehicles and the largest truck available. Water service will be provided by a twelve-inch extension from the existing sixteen-inch water main along the south side of Schoolcraft Road. A two-inch domestic lead and an eight-inch fire lead will be provided to serve the building. A proposed remote fire department connection is shown in the lawn area. Typically, these fire department connections are well-mounted on the building. We will recommend review and approval from the Plymouth Fire Marshal. Sanitary sewer service will be provided by an eight-inch extension from the existing eight-inch sanitary sewer along the south side of Schoolcraft Road. A six-inch lead will be provided to serve the building. Stormwater will be collected by a single storm sewer collection system and discharged to a two-proposed detention basins northwest and east of the site with outlet to an existing yard drain within the I-275 right-of-way east of the site. No stormwater management calculations were provided. At this time, we are unable to determine if the stormwater management system is sized properly for the proposed development. Review and approval will be required from Wayne County Department of Public Services to confirm the proposed detention basin and pre-treatment need their current requirements. Discharge in the I-275 right-of-way will require review and approval from MDOT. In the event that MDOT does not approve the outlet into the right-of-way, additional stormwater improvements might be required by the township, including offside and downstream. This could potentially include a larger pond if there is no viable alternative outlet available. If this should impact on the proposed layout, reapproval from the planning commission might be required. Based on the comments stated in our site plan review letter, we recommend approval of the final site plan, with all additional comments being addressed in the engineering review stage.
Thank you. And we have communication from the fire department. They have no issues from a public safety perspective in the applicant who's here. Do you have anything to come up and talk about the recommendations?
Good evening. Wasn't sure where we were gonna get here tonight. Some people like to be last on the agenda.
Doug Stalzenberg, Excel Engineering, civil engineer on the project here tonight with John Bernardo and Dan O'Boyle from Penske. I'm gonna defer any architectural-type questions to John. He can talk to you about the canopy supports on the fuel island, what he's proposing to do there. Just a couple of things. We have no issues with any of the comments from the township engineer. We did submit a complete drainage package design to the township and asked that that be forwarded on to your engineer, and I don't know, apparently that didn't happen. But we did submit that, and we-
Yeah, we did receive like some calculations, but we usually like to see the calculations on the plans. But that's fine, because we will review that at the engineering stage.
Hey, I'm not sure I understood what you said. Did you get the packet of-
Are you talking about the MDOT package that you sent to them? It was like a really long package with a little-
It was all part of the- It was, it was all part of the package that we submitted for final site plan approval.
Yeah, so we did receive those, but what I'm saying is, we like to include the calculations in the actual plans, just one sheet showing all the calculations. We don't need to see everything that you provided to them, we just need to see the main one.
Okay.
Of the rational meta and the detention basin, basically.
But I think what she's saying is that, you know, that can all be resolved in the stage after this, which is just with the engineer. That's correct.
You have to excuse me, I'm having a hard time hearing you from this distance, so...
So, but that, that is perfectly acceptable to be resolved in the next stage, which is purely engineering review. So you've provided it, that's great, and they can give you all their additional notes after this. It, it won't hold you up at all, is what I mean.
Okay, well, we, we have no, no other issues with the recommendations. All of them will be addressed when we prepare our final engineering plans, so there's one more step in the process yet. I think the only thing that I'd like to talk about, and we talked about it last time when we were here for tentative approval, is the trees, the landscaping. In your report, it mentions that heritage trees or specimen trees need to be replaced on a one-to-one ratio. When I read your landscape ordinance, I think that is speaking to trees that are planned to be saved, but then, for whatever reason, were taken out. I think that's the way I read your ordinance, so correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, so heritage trees, I should apologize, are mentioned under our overarching tree ordinance. So trees have two components in the township. One are the regulations housed in the zoning code, and the other ones are in the tree ordinance itself, which is under the general township code. That is the one that has some more detail addressing the replacement requirement for heritage trees. So when a tree is over 18 inches in size and of a desirable species, like an oak, you would then have to compensate with 18 inches of new tree width rather than 1/4 of that. So, and we know that, you know, the tree ordinance is relatively new, and oftentimes, these calculations are hard to get right the first time, so we're happy to work with you to make sure that we're getting all the trees included that need to be.
Well, Penske is wanting to have the site look nice, they're willing to landscape the site, and I think their only concern is that the landscaping in front of the building needs to be toned down so the building is visible. Off to the side where the parking is, we could probably do, beef that up if, if that's, if that's what you're looking for, and we could also maybe substitute some pine trees instead of the deciduous trees to provide year-round screening. So I guess my question is, how do we resolve this? Do we work directly with you as to what's, what's a reasonable compromise here? Because if, if we have to put all the trees, based on your calculation, right now, we've got 39 trees, I think, and we would have to add about 50 more. I'm not sure we can fit 50 more across the front.
Yeah, understood. So the other thing the planning commission can do is allow the applicant to provide a payment in lieu for some of those trees. So that's up to you folks today, but if you're worried about being able to physically fit them all on the site, we can arrange for a payment option instead of the actual trees on the site. Of course, we prefer trees, but, yeah, the planning commission can also approve our department to help work out that ratio of how many trees are being covered by payment and how many are actually being installed. Does that make more sense?
Okay, so you and I can work that out together, and the planning commission doesn't need to be involved with that decision?
If they put that in their motion today, yes. It's up to them, though.
I'm looking for the landscape plan on this. I saw it once before.
See if I can find the digital one.
So what do we need to...
So, basically...
Second page shows all the trees that are being removed.
What he's asking for is a slight modification to Laura's suggested language. So instead of saying revised landscape plan to correct the number of required replacement trees and add new landscape areas as identified in this report, I would say revised landscape plan to correct the required number of replacement trees and add new landscape areas as identified in this report, allowing for a substitution of some trees for a payment, to be determined by the township plan.
You guys get all that?
Nope.
Nope.
You repeat that for us, Bob?
So, under the recommendation, the first bullet point, this would be a slight deviation from what Laura had written. So, for example, a different way to state this bullet might be revised landscape plan to correct the required number of replacement trees and add new landscape areas as identified in this report, allowing for a substitution of a portion of the trees for a payment in lieu as determined acceptable by the township planner. And that would give Laura the flexibility to allow them to substitute some trees for a payment in lieu and, you know, add additional trees to the site where possible. But they would still have to meet the requirement for the number of trees. You know, it would either be in payment or in physical location. And this would be separate from the detention landscaping and those other ones that I mentioned. This is just the replacement ratio.
So your concern about, sort of, where the building actually sits is that no one's going to see that you're there?
Pardon me.
So what's your objection? Can you identify again what's your objection about putting all those trees in?
I wouldn't call it an objection.
A concern.
The concern, the desire of Penske is to keep the area in, directly in front of the building.
Yeah, more visibility of it. Okay.
Where, where we have the parking of the trucks, trucks and trailers over here...
Yeah, you're okay with that.
That's not, we don't have that concern, and they don't have that concern there. These trees are, right now, about 20 feet, 25 feet on center.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not sure how many more trees you could pack in there, but...
Well, couldn't, so, Nami, so in front of the building part, couldn't they put, put trees that are similar to what we have along Ann Arbor Road?
You mean the lower deciduous trees?
Yes.
Like the, the zelkovas and stuff? Yeah, they, they could possibly fit those in.
Well, if that's good for you, or...
I don't know what kind of trees you're talking about.
Yeah, I figured you wouldn't.
I know, landscape design, we have somebody else who knows.
But they could work this out with you.
Yeah, ultimately, our recommendation is...
You could work it out with them, they could show you a picture.
We, we want to approve them and move you guys on to the next stage, because they've been working so hard to make this look really good, and we all appreciate that. So we'd like to just get them out the door, resolve all this administratively, and keep it going.
Yeah, well, so you can consult with him as to something, and if they, so the payment in lieu of, we could say a motion that that would happen, but maybe you wouldn't, you'd work out some other kind of approach to it.
Yeah, and Laura could determine how many are payment in lieu and how many actually go on the site, depending on what could be squeezed in, you know.
How's that?
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll work it out. Hey, we have to be, do it this...
Right, right. Well, I don't want to get into the weeds with this, you know? I can see your point.
I don't want to get into it.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make my point.
We want to get into the trees.
We'll work it out.
Okay.
All right, so are we ready for a motion? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Hi. John Bernardo, Senior Regional Facility Commissioner for Penske Truck Leasing. I just want to thank you, everybody, for considering this, and we're very excited about this. Doug's concerns are something we can work out. Again, I had indicated that, you know, it's important. We have a brand image, and we have a building, I think we reviewed in our last meeting, that we're trying to make sure that people can recognize. And so the visibility of the building frontage is going to be important to us, but by all means, we want to be able to comply with the landscaping requirements that, that you have, and if the payment plan option is available for substituting, of actually putting all those trees in, I think in the end run, it's going to look great. It's going to look a lot better than it is right now, so...
Wow, you, you've been here throughout our, our whole meeting, so you see some of the things that we've gone through. We're concerned about upgrading various sites within the township, and you're certainly taking a site that was derelict in a lot of different ways and, and improving it, and the township does appreciate that and your investment.
Thank you. And to the, a point I just made, some notes, the trees, we will approach those with, with administratively, and then irrigation is not going to be an issue. I can see that is, is not an issue with us. The screening, of course, is part of that. I want to make, the building elevation was noted as approved, is a 5.1 that was submitted, and in that, there was a concern for the fuel service island, as we call it, not a gas station, because we are not open to the public for, as per se. What we will do is match, and I have an example of that, I'll pass around here to you, that shows the masonry columns that match the building facade, so we don't have the conflicting brick versus CMU type of a thing going on. It doesn't look good, so I'll pass that on. The trash crowd fencing and gates, I think in the wording, it mentioned pressure-treated wood or metal. If you'll accept metal, I think we can create a longer-lasting, more durable metal look that mimics a wood to, to satisfy that requirement. There's also some mentions of a fire department connection. I think we had shown it on a site, and I think the requirement, but typically, it's on a building, was, was noted, and we have no issue with meeting that compliance, putting it on the building if we need to. And lastly, the curb height was addressed. There was a concern for 8-inch-high parking blocks. Well, those 8-inch parking blocks that we designate are only for truck parking spaces where we need heavy-duty parking spaces. For all car parking spaces, we'll use 6-inch-high parking blocks for curb and sidewalk, so we'll satisfy all those needs. Again, thank you. We're excited to proceed to the next step. And if I could just clarify what that next step is going to be here tonight, that'd be great.
Sure, so the next step is that you would move on to engineering review, which is an administrative form of review between you and our engineering staff, where you provide them with engineering-level drawings. That means the site plan is kind of your basic level, then you'd start providing them with the exact dimensions of your pipes, you know, the exact grading of the site, those really, you know, more detailed plans prepared by an engineer for an engineer to review. So you, basically, you would send us your revised site plan incorporating these changes. We would make sure our office says, all right, looks good to go. It all gets over to engineering, you make sure you have your submission in at Wayne County, they review it, when they're ready, they get the Wayne County approval, they sign off. Then it all moves on to the construction phase. So basic, the basic schedule is planning, engineering, construction. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you very much for your point there. Again, thank you.
Are we ready for a motion, or are there additional talks?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, based upon general compliance with Article 29 Site Plan Standards of the Zoning Ordinance, I move that the planning commission grant final site approval for the proposed Penske Truck, Truck Leasing Facility, Application Number 24A2, contingent on the following items. One, that a revised landscape plan to correct the required number of replacement trees and to add new landscape areas as identified in this report and as worked out between the applicant and the planning commission, and to also consider payment in lieu in the event that additional trees that would otherwise be required would not be able to be planted on the site. In addition, we ask that greater architectural detail for the gas station to mirror the masonry materials on the primary building take place, and also that updated gates on the dumpster enclosure comply with the allowable materials per the ordinance. And we would also note that no signage is approved as part of this application.
But I have one correction. You said to be worked out with the planning commission? The correction would be, would be worked out administratively?
Oh, I'm sorry. With that correction, it would be worked out administratively. Thank you.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barry and supported by Commissioner Griger to through final, final site plan subject to set conditions for Application 2482. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. So we have the planning report.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to have a comment on the SPARS. So we denied them, and then it goes before the, the...
Board of Trustees.
Yeah, the Board of Trustees, but they're presenting a plan, and I did listen to the Board of Trustee meeting, and Bob said, well, they never presented us with a plan. So they actually have a plan? Have you seen it, or...
It's a concept plan. So similarly, they brought a concept plan to you, they've revised it and added some detail. That's what's going before the board, so...
Now it's going to go as a, as a study session before the Board of Trustees?
Mm-hmm. Is it significantly different than what we saw?
Yeah, it is different. So they've changed where the buildings are located on the site. Previously, they had the residential portion of the multi-story right up against the single-family residential, and the concerns were that, you know, you, you will be looking into your backyard, and you'd have everyone just kind of staring out over you. They've reconfigured it so that the parking is now what abuts the single-family residential, and they've moved everything out more towards the major roadways. So that's the, the big reconfiguration component, just to give it a summary.
Well, thanks for the addition. Remind people that we never really had a plan.
Oh, there was a napkin, I believe.
So is there at any point that if an application is different enough than, than what we decided on, that it has to come back to us and not go to the Board of Trustees, or is that just the process? This is, they could do something dramatically different, and it still doesn't come back to us?
That's my question.
So there's no specific threshold, like 40% of it's different, it has to go back to the planning commission. It's up to the board whether or not they want to send it back to you. So the board can make a choice to send it back to the planning commission for re-review.
It's going to be what my recommendation is.
Yeah, similarly, when you were doing a zoning ordinance amendment, the planning commission makes a recommendation, and then when it gets to the board level, they can make changes. They don't have to send it back to you, as long as they're not adding a new section or, you know, considering a part of the ordinance that you never saw. So say you wanted to modify 25.7, they can do whatever they want to 25.7, right? Because they're, that's, you know, they're the lawmakers. So to a certain extent, they can review a changed plan without sending it back to you, but they can also make the choice to remand it to the planning commission for another review.
So would they get a...
It could also be an end run around the planning commission.
Right.
Now, that was my concern, and since this was quite controversial, and, you know, I hear the residents when they come before you guys and us, you know, they're talking about transparency and, you know, something's behind the closed doors, and, and that's what my concern is, is what are we portraying? Not, you know, us, appointed and elected officials are, are presenting to the citizenry. So that would be, you know, my concern. I, I think it's a little bit the same as when Walt Menard was doing his condos, remember? We did so many units, and then it went before the Board of Trustees, and they said, well, you need to reduce the units, and then we had another meeting, and that was after we had already approved, or we didn't approve, but made our recommendation.
Will the Board of Trustees get, say, the before and after? Will they get what we said, what we recommended denial, like that concept? And then get the new one? Do they get both?
Yeah, the study session is next week, correct? The 20th?
I want to say, no, I, I've lost track of the date.
I thought it was next week, but either way, yes, we can provide them with the, you know, before and afters.
But just so that they see what we s...
Saw.
So just so that they see what we, you know, recommended denial of?
No, I thought it was in October.
Maybe I'm confused, but either way, yes. We have all of the prints and the original records from when it first came before you, and those are all available to the board.
And the original minutes and...
Mm-hmm, yep.
And then will the residents in the area get in any way noticed again? Well, I guess this is just a study session, so no.
Yeah, study session doesn't require noticing, because no one's making a vote.
October 3rd, the study session.
Okay, there you go, yeah, because no one's making a vote at a study session, so no notice. All right, thank you. Does anyone have other questions on items in the planning report? I don't want to go through them all, because I know you've been here late.
Well, there was some question about the work session.
The work session? Oh, so October 4th?
Yeah.
Yep, so we currently have a work session slated for October 4th. We hope that all of you can make it. Again, there's no voting items on this. We just are listening to your feedback from last time that when ordinance amendments come before you, you want extra time to review them, right? So our plan now is whenever we have an ordinance amendment, to put it for you for a work session to study it before it actually comes to a vote. Like the, for example, the solar ordinance didn't have an extra work session. So this work session is to consider changes to the land division section, which I'll talk about in a minute, and also, since we're already having one, it's an alley-oop to start re-looking at the master plan. You know, the master plan has been publicly available for two years at this point. It's time to get it moving, time to get a new one adopted, so, and you guys have heard a lot of valuable feedback over the last year, so it's time to start churning on that future land use map.
Did an email go out about this work session date?
I don't think it had yet, because we want to make sure that enough of you can come, and also, you know, it would be a special meeting, so the posting, you can decide up to eighteen hours in advance whether or not you're going to have it. So we wanted to make sure that there'd be enough attendance.
But there's no decisions being made.
No.
We never make a decision.
By definition.
We don't make a motion.
Yep. Study sessions, you cannot make decisions, by definition.
Right.
Well, maybe people should look at their calendars when you get home and make sure you can be here.
It's just usually an email goes out asking us if we're available on that date before, but that's okay.
That's okay, so this is me asking you if actual reports would work. If it won't work, then we will find a different day that works for everybody.
And talking about emails, I'll be sending out an email to the commission that I changed the email address that, you know, you sent out to the group, because I did my own, there was a problem. So now we're going to use the township email. That doesn't seem to be bouncing back. I sent the last couple, I talked to some of you, you got the email, so that's working, so I'm stepping away from maintaining that.
I'm sorry, I have a question about the Arby's renovation. It says major administrative review. What are they doing?
So they're changing the facade of that building, it's the primary thing. So it's going to be renovated from an Arby's into a Chipotle, and currently the Arby's has some of those triangular, you know, braced windows. They're going to be covering some of those up with a brick that matches the existing brick to kind of fill in some pieces of the facade and make room for also a sign, because right now the only...
You're talking about the one on Five Mile, right?
Yes, Five Mile one. Because right now, the only sign that they have is kind of the one that hangs on the interior of the window, and they're just changing that, especially because Chipotle as a sign is very horizontal, whereas Arby's is very vertical. So they're making changes to the facade to accommodate their brand, essentially.
Okay. So what is the Dunkin' Donuts? What are they doing?
Similar, facade refresh. Basically, I think every major drive-through restaurant chain is doing a facade refresh right now. You've seen the Taco Bell that's up in the city of Plymouth, with the purple squares, you know, and the Wendy's is doing all of their modernist facade, so it's another one of those.
Okay, and then the last one, the Purcell Place, did that get passed by the ZBA?
Yes.
Yes.
So basically, what they did, incorrect, not incorrect me if I'm wrong, they, because I wasn't involved with it on the planning commission when it was passed, but they have, the cluster housing option to put in the eight homes is no longer financially feasible for the developer right now because of costs and everything. But there is one person who's interested in buying one of the lots, so it's exactly the same configuration, they're not changing anything. So they're not like splitting it in half and have two big parcels, they're just carving off one of the smaller parcels that would have been in the cluster housing option because someone actually wants to build a home on it.
So is the house going to get knocked down, or?
They don't know.
They don't know?
Yeah. So it's closest to the road. It's right on the, it's right on the road. And then they still have the access to the easement for the road that would be a road if they ever do go back and make it into a cluster housing option again.
So there, that home's driveway, I don't know if you got into this level of detail.
We did.
It's, where is it going to hook up again? Where the new road was going to be?
It doesn't have, it doesn't have to, correct?
Yeah, it's just a single-family home.
It's going to be right on North Territorial?
It's going to be right on North Territorial.
Yeah, just a single-family home, just like, basically, it's like any other single-family home development at this point, like for one house, so.
So what will happen with the rest, is he going to sell it? We just don't know.
We don't know.
Don't know at this point, yep.
Ken McDonald told me that the cluster housing option has effectively expired. Is that correct?
Yeah, just like a special land use or any other type of development condition, if you just let it sit for a year, it will expire, so. And there's only so many extensions you can get.
You guys spent a lot of time on that, on the planning commission, didn't you, getting it originally approved?
They did.
That was Leo, right?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions about items in the report?
I have one, I'm not sure it's on this report, but you saw that they cleared the Elks Building, and they've also started to clear the brush in the trees in that back area. I would like to be, and this is a bit of an unusual request, but I would like to have somebody from the township and Toll Brothers walk me through that site and show me where they have staked off the heritage trees and the trees that are to be preserved per our previous agreement.
Okay.
I'm available any day to do that, sooner the better, because they are starting to cut stuff down, and Mary Ann will join me if she's available.
Okay, yeah, I'll ask our building department what their inspection schedule is.
I noticed the, I always want to say Common Girl.
Courthouse.
Courthouse Girl.
Yes, also coming down.
Yeah, they finally got their brownfield done, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to ask our building department or tell Laura to ask them tomorrow, because I'm in the office, but I'll get her on it.
Very much appreciated, thank you.
Is that it for everyone? Okay, floor is yours.
Okay. So the next item we have is only an informational update on the Parks and Recreation Plan. So just wanted to let you know that we received a total of eight hundred and forty surveys at the end of the survey period, which is roughly double what we presented to you last time. We were in the three hundreds the last time I came to you. We had fifteen residents at our community-wide open house, and we've been receiving email comments coming into our inbox about the Parks and Recreation Plan, so it's going good. And as a reminder, Parks and Recreation Plans are always on tight schedule because the DNR requires that they be submitted by February 1st of every year that you want them approved. So pretty soon, you'll be seeing, you know, a draft once the city kind of gets their end of the survey buttoned up, coming out to you for your review. And, you know, I know you're not the Park and Recreation Commission, but we always ask for your comments and feedback, especially because parks are a land use, so.
And every one of them said they wanted a horse racing track.
Yep.
As long as it has a dog park in it.
Mm-hmm, yep, horses and dogs over there.
There's a serious idea.
All right, but yeah, so that was just your information, and also to let you know that the, you know, keep an eye on the Board of Trustees meetings, because the Parks and Recreation Plan updates also come through those channels, so. Okay, and our last item is this memorandum for you. So this is your memorandum, basically for you to read before we consider the ordinance at our study session. So this is an ordinance covering why our department is initiating an update to our section on land divisions. I didn't expect you to read this before today, but basically, this is just an explanation of what this is for. And then by the next meeting, you'll actually receive one that looks like ordinance form, you know what I mean, in the proper formatted text for your review. So just take a look at this before our next meeting, that's all I ask.
Yeah, thank you for doing it.
Yeah, I glanced through it, just a quick clarification that it said it was targeted for kind of unusual, you know, legacy lots, for lack of a better term, but there is a fear out there that it's going to, that people are going to start splitting lots in like green meadows and putting in Bigfoot homes. I've gotten a couple of calls on that, so we need to really clarify that that's not going to happen.
Yeah, so that's a great point. This change would not exempt the homeowner from the other requirements we have for access to the site. So for example, if you have a really deep lot and you want to split off the back of your lot to sell it, you can't do that for multiple homes. Basically, only one home could ever possibly go there, because we have requirements to have a certain amount of street frontage and a certain amount of space dedicated for utilities. So these deep lots, you know, unless you have a cluster housing option, they're not going to be chopped up into a million tiny lots, essentially. But whether or not someone has a Bigfoot home, even today, we can't really control the style of someone's home and the size they want to make it, so, you know, unless the township wants to adopt residential design standards, we can't really stop people from making Bigfoot homes.
It's like it's already happening in green meadows.
Yeah, even though, it's already happening. Yeah, I agree that Bigfoot homes are not great, and they don't help the character of the township, but currently, we don't have any regulations against them. But yeah, so does anyone have questions about this before we come back to it next time? Okay, great, let's get you home.
Are you down?
Please.
Okay.
Nobody has any comments.
Nope.
Is there a, is there a motion to adjourn at ten o'clock?
Oh, man.
Mr. Chairperson, who will adjourn meeting tonight at ten oh one AM?
Ten o'clock. Is there a support?
Support.
I can't believe...
You guys all went the distance here.
Did everyone fall asleep? All right, moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Berry, who adjourned the meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.
I just want to say that...